You're watching H-CAM's Government Channel, where we provide coverage of the latest meetings and events happening in Hingham's local government. For more Hingham news, tune into H-CAM's Public Channel on Comcast 97 and Verizon Files 31, and Educational Channel on Comcast 22 and Verizon Files 29.
To this meeting of the Hingham Zoning Board of Appeals. Today is January 11th, 2017, our first meeting of the new year. It's almost 10 after 7:00. The first item on our agenda is Broadstone Bear Cove Alliance LLC. This is a continuation of a hearing on a comprehensive permit application from Broadstone Bear Cove Alliance to construct a 220-unit rental community, including 55 affordable housing units, at 230 Beale Street in the Office Park zoning district. Two procedural issues. First, these proceedings are being recorded both by the Zoning Board of Appeals office, as well as by H-CAM. And second, this board consists of three members. One of our members is absent this evening. Our regulations allow us to proceed with the two members. And the third member will actually have to endure the process of watching all of this on TV so they can be brought up to speed before the next hearing. And so with that, I would turn this over to the applicant to review the current application.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Toccio for Alliance. And what we're going to do this evening, just real quickly, preview, going through, we're going to ask Mr. Connery to explain the fiscal report that he put together. And he's with me to my left beyond Mr. Bijulien of Alliance, as you know. Then what we'll do is we'll ask Holly Herbster of the PAL, the Archaeological, to come up and explain, give folks some information on the work that she did to get that state permit. And then finally, we'll ask Brian O'Connor of Cube 3 to run through again another summary of the architectural, and then be prepared to answer questions that the board may have.
So before you proceed, just so the members of the public are aware, after we have given the applicant a chance to give their presentation, there will be opportunity for members of the public, both to give comments as well as to ask questions.
And then I should probably also give a quick update. Additional filings were made in the interim. We've made progress with respect to, I know that the traffic engineer and also the civil engineer met with Mr. Dirk, the traffic peer review engineer. And they're working towards a design that is going well. Also, Mr. Quinn of Allen &amp; Major, the civil engineer, submitted drainage reports, drainage revisions, to Pat Brennan of Emory Engineering. And that's basically undergoing review as well. Additionally, we submitted a photometric plan, which basically, at this point, you can take a look at the numbers if you've got any questions. We don't have Mr. Quinn here this evening. So if we wanted to push that to the next meeting, that probably makes some sense from our perspective. From, so what I'll do is John Connery, if he could speak to the report that he put together for you folks regarding the fiscal impacts of the proposed project.
Before you proceed, just want to clear for the record, you're not related to Sean Connery of James Modern?
No, but when I was in high school, I got a lot of mileage out of that for a while. I roped a few in.
Okay, Mr. Secret Agent, you can proceed.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to outline the fiscal report, how it was done, and what the findings have been. I think, I know the board has had a chance to review it. And for the members of the public, you might know that after the initial review, there were some changes requested by the board. And some of the numbers and some of the factors went into it. And so what I'm speaking to tonight is the revised numbers and findings. We accepted all those changes.
Let me just interrupt you. I noticed as you turn one way or the other, fading in and out. See if you can just consistently move that so that...
I think I'm going to move it to the middle. How's that? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But just so that everybody here understands what a fiscal impact is, it sounds kind of highfalutin', but in reality, ladies and gentlemen, every piece of property in every community has a fiscal profile. By that, I mean, on one end of it, it produces a certain amount of revenue that come into the public coffers in a variety of ways, property taxes, excise taxes, whatever. And also because of the nature of the project, it creates certain costs. Residential, in this case, is, produces school costs, which, as anybody in this room probably understands, is the highest component of your municipal budget. So essentially, a fiscal study is very simply an analysis and a comparison of cost versus revenue. And there are certain little shorthand numbers that I use and other analysts use. We call it a cost-to-revenue ratio. One being neutral, less than one positive. More than one gives you an idea of the order of magnitude of negativity. And we can translate that number usually into, you know, dollars per year loss or gain on the municipal budget. Also, it's important to understand that the fiscal impact that I've submitted on behalf of the applicant deals with current dollars. What that means is we're making an assumption that this project is here today. What it would look like, how it would be taxed, what it would generate in terms of service costs, and how it would fit into your municipal budget, and what the impacts would be. So there's no estimating on what revenues might be five, 10 years from now, or costs. So we make that assumption. It's all done on current values. It's also done on current local data. Everything here in terms of the comparables, in terms of school numbers, are based on local projects. The police and fire numbers are based on the comparable projects of Avalon Bay and Brewer Meadows, the two. So we know how many, in the last two or three years, how many fire calls there are, how many police calls there are, ambulance calls. So we have a good, locally-based set of data that we can make assumptions from. And I want to take one second and say, I enjoyed working with the two Olsons, which I found a little confusing at the beginning.
It's called the Chief.
Chief, that's what I did. Gallo and Superintendent, and Pam King, the Secretary Administrative Assistant, and the Assessor. They were wonderful, and they were very cooperative. And as a person who does a lot of this work and doesn't sometimes reach consensus with locals, it was wonderful to have their cooperation. So I'd like to take the time just to thank them for that. Let me say something about the police and fire calls. There is no real way you can project, based on what you currently have, what next year's police or fire calls might be on any certain type of property. If you go back three or four years, you'll see the numbers fluctuate. So in my report, what you see is an analysis based on the real amount of calls they would make over three-year period. And I increased the number by 25%, which actually obviously increases service costs. That's done not just as a cushion, but as a recognition of reality of what could happen. I get that question a lot. So the police and fire calls, which are significant costs, they're measurable, are not the most expensive item in terms of fiscal impact. That relates, in residential development, to school costs. And here, when you look at school numbers, it's very important to realize what the unit mix of the project is. You have 40% of this development that is studio or one-bedroom. There's no real, long-term, measurable student cost. You may get a student once or twice from a one-bedroom, but they won't matriculate through 12 years of that situation. They come from two- and three-bedroom units. So the report is broken down into an analysis of the two-bedroom units based in town, similar units, and primarily Avalon Bay. And originally, I had a 1.15 analysis, but the town corrected my numbers. It's 1.5, 1.5, so it's 4 tenths, 4 100ths difference. But it was four students. And there's concomitant costs with that, which was a $40,000 increase over my initial estimate. Then I looked at Brewer Meadows, and I'm very well aware that Brewer Meadows is not an apartment-type complex. And I know it's a lower value, and therefore it's more accessible to families. But it is a three-bedroom. It's real, it's existing. And it has the 21 units. It's not that far off from the 35 or so units that are proposed here as three-bedroom. So I used that, and it come out to about a .81 students on an average per unit. And it's a little bit higher than the regional average, but it's a local number, and I'm comfortable with it. Long and the short of it, ladies and gentlemen, we're projecting about 43 students. That would be an average. You could probably, in some years, get as low as 35, 32, and maybe as high as 52. But the running average will be around 43. Again, just to sum up and not do this, so I took the costs for those students based on your actual net school spending from your actual budgets, which includes all costs, your police and fire costs. And by the way, my police and fire costs use a 30% factor for insurance and off-police budget, general government costs. So they're real cost numbers. I come up with a value of somewhere around $462,000 a year operating cost. Now, on the revenue side, I looked at what, working with your assessor, what is known as the stabilized income method, which they apply to all multifamily homes in town. And there are factors. You take a look at what the rents are, but then you look against that. You have a deduction for vacancy. You have a deduction for operation and maintenance. And you have a cap rate, capitalization rate. I used what the assessor told me. Now, your cap rate is probably going to go down. It might even be down lower now since the six to eight months that I talked with him, which would actually increase the taxable value. But for the sake of argument, we stay with what we have. And when you look at that, we come up with about a $577,000 yield, including about, in that number is about $30,000 of excise taxes, based on about $100, $110 per vehicle be located on the site. So the cost-to-revenue ratio is about .8, moderately positive. It has about $114,000 annual fiscal benefit. Not a tremendous amount of money. You're not going to go to town meeting and build a new school on it. But the nature of this project, as you know, is constrained. Once approved, as is, you can't add bedrooms. You can't, you know, the developer, it's not a single family where you can build, put bedrooms on it and change. It is what it is. So my feeling is that, my finding is, I think, sustainable for the long term, given the nature of it. But the real nature of this project goes back to what I mentioned a little while ago, which is the unit mix. When you basically take 40% of the units out of the mix in terms of school costs, and yet the cost per value per square foot of rent of those are higher than the two- and three-bedrooms, you get to a position, along with the rent value of the town on the revenue side. This is not going to be a market rent that's regionally average. It's going to be higher on the market rent in Hingham, as it is in your existing project. Put those two together, you come up with a moderately positive development. What that means to me, and what I would say to you as the main finding of the report, is that you have a project opportunity here to create more diversity in your housing stock. You have an opportunity to meet and create affordable housing, meet affordable housing goals. But you can do so in a fiscally prudent manner. It's not going to ever go negative. Even in a difficult fiscal environment nationally or regionally, where you might have a drop of 10, 20% in the economy and rents go down, you have a little bit of play that, in the long term, worst-case scenario, you might be neutral. But you'll always probably have a small return on the project, if you look at it statistically. And again, it's because of the rent value and the unit mix. Those are the two factors that really drive this project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll take any questions from anybody you want me to.
Anyone from the public have questions on this? Yes. If you could just mind coming up to, just on this specific report?
That was my question.
Yes.
In general comments?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. I want to scoop Mike. Yep. Sorry. Do you want John here for that?
Yeah.
John? We're not letting you escape.
I'm sorry. This supplemental memorandum doesn't have a date. Do you remember when you created this?
Yes, it doesn't. I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's okay. That's all right. If you have a general idea of when you sent it, that would be helpful.
November.
It was in November? Okay. All right. Thank you.
November 9th.
Okay. If you could just confirm that so we can note it for the record. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now for the archaeological Q and A, if you will. We've got Holly Herbster from Public Archaeology Laboratory down in Rhode Island. And might you go through?
Okay. Thank you. I thought that I would just explain how PAL was involved in the project, the process that we went through, and the results of the work that we did. PAL was contracted after the...
Stop you. If you could introduce PAL.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure.
So we know it's a nonprofit.
Yep. I am Holly Herbster. I'm a senior archaeologist and principal investigator at the Public Archaeology Laboratory, which is a cultural resource management firm in Pawtucket, Rhode Island. I have been at the company for 28 years, and PAL has been in business for about 35 years. So we work all over New England, and my work is specifically focused in Massachusetts. PAL was, so I'm going to use PAL as the acronym for the company going forward. We were contracted to conduct archaeological investigations at the project area after the Massachusetts Historical Commission reviewed a project notification form that was submitted by the proponent for the project. The MHC indicated the potential for there to be archaeological deposits within the project area. So they requested what is referred to as an archaeological reconnaissance survey. And that is something that requires a permit from the State Archaeologists Office, which is also at the Mass Historical Commission. In order to do any type of archaeological work in Massachusetts, you do need a permit from the state. And in order to receive that permit, you have to be qualified to work in Massachusetts, which I am. And you have to submit a full technical proposal that includes a methodology for whatever work you're proposing to do. You're required to complete a technical report. Upon completion of your work, provide that to the Mass Historical Commission, and follow up with any recommendations that they may have, based on the results of the work. So PAL put together a technical proposal to do an archaeological reconnaissance survey. We got the permit to do that work after it was reviewed by the Mass Historical Commission. And the reconnaissance survey did not involve any archaeological testing or excavation. It was designed to primarily collect background research about the historical and potentially Native American use of the property and the surrounding area, and to sensitize the project impact areas as far as archaeological sensitivity would go, moderately sensitive, highly sensitive, low sensitivity. And that involved not only background research, but a site walkover, which I conducted along with a member of the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe, who was invited to be a participant from the Tribal Historic Preservation Office, and with Mike. And we walked the entire property, spent most of the day there. We also conducted, or I also conducted, background research at the Hingham Historical Commission. I met with Andrea Young and collected information from her. Also went through all of the state archaeological site files, which are confidential, and I have access to those. And also conducted research at the local library with the local historic records. Based on the results of the reconnaissance survey, we identified the areas where project construction would be going on, ground disturbance would be going on, and recommended that prior to any construction starting on the project, we conduct an archaeological intensive survey, which is actually where we go out and we dig two-foot-by-two-foot holes, sift through the soil, locate and identify any archaeological materials. So at the point that we did the subsurface testing, we were no longer looking at the entire parcel that's owned by the proponent. We were only looking at the areas that are proposed for ground disturbance and the areas surrounding them. So in other words, we don't just look at the footprint of a building. We consider a construction building envelope when we're doing our subsurface testing. We had to go back to Mass Historical Commission to have our permit revised to do that next level of work. Again, provide a proposal with a detailed methodology for where we would be doing our testing, how much testing we would do. Again, received approval from Mass Historical to do that work. And we conducted the excavation work in September of this past year. We did not identify any Native American archaeological materials as part of the survey. And we did document extensively disturbed soils across the entire area that was tested where new construction is proposed. And that disturbance is related both to the Navy's use of the property, which began in the early 1900s and continued until, I believe, the 1970s or so. So it was the use by the Navy, then the subsequent demolition and removal of the buildings that had been on that property. And then the construction of the Hingham Mutual Fire Insurance Building that's there now, and all of the utilities and associated infrastructure. So the entire area that we tested, we determined was previously disturbed, and we did not identify any significant archaeological deposits. The results of both phases of work were presented in a technical proposal to the Mass Historical Commission. They reviewed that report, and they concurred with our recommendations that no additional archaeological investigations were recommended for the area that's proposed for development. And as part of that project, we documented the stone structure that's in the southern portion of the project area where there are not any impacts proposed. So that information is included in our report. And if, in the future, any construction or development is proposed for that area, then Mass Historical would again be involved in reviewing that project and requesting, if necessary, additional archaeological work. But as far as this current project is as proposed, the Mass Historical Commission has concurred with our recommendations, and their review has been closed to their satisfaction.
Would you mind commenting on the confidential nature of the reports you produce?
Sure.
My assumption, and I'm certainly not an expert, is that certain information needs to be kept confidential so that people don't go out, start digging in certain areas and looking for things.
Yeah.
But if you could just comment about that.
Sure. And I meant to mention that, so thanks for asking about that. The State Archaeologists Permit Regulations mandate that confidential information includes archaeological site locations and details about materials that are identified as part of an archaeological site. So as a permit holder, I am not allowed to make that report or the detailed information in that report available to anyone who is not directly associated with the project. So the property owner, or the proponent, or any review agencies that are permitting a project that need access to that. So the cover of the report is stamped confidential, and that is because of the State Archaeologists Permit Regulations. There's a second regulation that is in the Mass General laws that applies to local boards and historical commissions that receive that information because they're reviewing a project. That information is also, if it's provided to a historical commissioner to a town body, is considered confidential, is restricted access, and is not to be made available to the general public. And the reason for that is, as you stated, the state takes very seriously the need to protect archaeological sites from potential looting or from people who, you know, may go out and do harm to the site. So Massachusetts, more than many other states actually in New England, is very, very proprietary about keeping archaeological site information confidential. And they do understand that, as part of the public comment process and people being involved, that generalized information needs to be made available. But specific information, especially maps that show archaeological sites or boundaries of archaeological sites, are not public information.
If you can answer any questions?
I will. But did you have anything you wanted to add before?
No, just citation. I believe it was Chapter 48D, which is one of the references that Jesus made with respect to the Mass General laws.
I just want to be clear. I understand that you were, one of the focuses that you mentioned was tribal lands. Were you also just sensitive in general to whether or not this was a site that was used as a graveyard for other purposes, non-trivial?
Yes, yes. And that was something, I mean, certainly, this project in particular was one that required quite a bit of extensive background research because there is the, there are recorded archaeological sites adjacent to or nearby to this project area. One of them is the Towne-Poor Farm Site, which is recorded in the Mass Historical Commission's inventory. And there is also the Bear Cove-Esker Native American Site, which is also recorded in the inventory and is located in the land that's currently parkland or protected land. The boundaries of those two archaeological sites, both the Poor Farm and the Native American Site, were never identified through professional archaeological studies. So if those sites had been identified by my work or my company's work, one of the things that we would have done, a professional archaeologist would have done, would have been to identify where the limits of the archaeological sites were. Neither of those sites had been delineated prior to us doing our survey. So that was one of the reasons it was very important for us to look into the historical records and then also to conduct subsurface testing within the project impact areas. We did not identify through any of our historical research or through any of our archaeological testing, direct evidence or any evidence at all that the property, that the project area parcel, had been used as a burial ground. The structure that's on the property that is referred to locally as a tomb, and it's also, I believe, in the historical records here as a tomb, it may have been used as a tomb. It may have been used as a burial vault. It's consistent in size and shape with a similar type of feature that you would find in a cemetery. We did look at it as part of the project. It's currently empty. There's nothing in there now. We did not do any archaeological testing around that structure because it is not going to be impacted by the project. And we don't ever do testing in areas that aren't going to be disturbed because the nature of our work is disturbance. So there was no archaeological verification of the function of that feature. I will tell you that in my experience, in 25, 28 years now as a professional archaeologist, the landscape and the terrain that surrounds that structure are not consistent with where you would expect to find a burial ground. And when we did our walkover survey, that was one of the things that I was specifically looking for, any indication of either disturbed soil or gravestones. Oftentimes, in other communities, Poor Farms did not, you know, you didn't see typical carved tall headstones that delineated graves. So I was looking for things that might be more simple, or perhaps, you know, not even marked. And I didn't see any evidence of that on the surface. So whether or not that structure was used as a vault or a tomb, I can't tell you. And I don't know, I don't know that even if we did archaeological testing, we would be able to know that for certain.
In one of the prior hearings, a member of the public had asked about the testing that was done, and I'm not sure if I've got it right, whether or not you used sonar or some appropriate testing. And I think you responded, or there was a response.
Yeah. Ground penetrating radar is what was specifically mentioned, which is a technique that archaeologists use in some areas and in certain situations to identify below-ground soil, changes in the soil. So in other words, if somebody digs a hole and fills it back in again, the soil composition looks different. And the technique, the ground penetrating radar, basically shoots, you know, I'm not a technical person, but it shoots something down into the ground and bounces back at a different rate if the ground has been disturbed versus undisturbed. In New England in particular, ground penetrating radar is not a very reliable technique for locating archaeological sites for a number of reasons. One of them is the glaciated and stony soils here. You can't tell when you're looking at the results of ground penetrating radar for certain if you're looking at a rock, if you're looking at, you know, something that a human being buried in the ground, or what exactly it is. And it also doesn't identify, for example, Native American sites, which is something that we're looking for in most cases as well. So a campsite or a deposit of stone tools, that's not something that ground penetrating radar would identify. In addition, in Massachusetts, the State Archaeologist's Office does not accept ground penetrating radar as a reliable tool for identifying archaeological sites of any sort, for the reasons that I just mentioned. And if you do use ground penetrating radar, it has some limited applications, it is always followed up with some type of archaeological testing to verify whether or not what you've identified is, in fact, an archaeological feature. So its uses in New England have been primarily in the specific context of identified burial grounds, so cemeteries that are known to have graves that are present. You run the GPR equipment over known grave locations so that you can get the signature of them and know what they look like. And then if there are areas where either you don't have headstones, or they're just outside the boundaries of a walled cemetery, you can run the GPR equipment over those areas and see if you got a similar signature back. And then again, if you use that technique, you identify what are called anomalies, and then you follow up with actual excavation to document that. So in this project area, between the rocks that are, I mean, the Esker that's next door was used as a boulder and gravel pit for years and years, so the soils are extremely stony and rocky here. And all of the disturbance that occurred as part of the Navy's occupation, those basically are two strikes against using GPR in this particular project area.
In your experience, is there any part of the site that is sort of original to what it was prior to the Navy taking over?
Honestly, the only area that I think may still be marginally intact would be the very western edge of the property outside of the development area.
Which one is the west?
The marshy area.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, outside of the development area.
I know it's outside, yeah.
Yeah, the natural wetland area.
That's where it's at.
Yeah.
On the west side.
Yeah. I mean, even where the Bear Cove Esker archaeological site is recorded, when that, when that site was initially identified, it was because there had been so much ground disturbance and gravel extraction that had gone in, had gone on there over the years. Advocational archaeologists saw artifacts that were just lying on the ground surface. They didn't go and dig for them initially, they had just been exposed through ground disturbance. So between the gravel extraction, the Navy coming in and really, really clearing off all the vegetation throughout that entire parcel, putting up buildings, the buildings coming down, the property re-vegetating, we, as I said, we didn't identify any intact soils within the project impact area. And even in the area where we didn't do our testing, I think that there's been quite a bit of ground disturbance over the years.
Sure. Susan.
I'm Susan Murphy, I'm real estate counsel, so, but I'm just, have a curious question, just because of all the disturbance there. Obviously, these are issues that people are very sensitive, especially in more modern times. Going back to the early 1900s and forward, when the military was setting up these sites, and there were a fair number of them in the Hingham area, is it something that you know, based on your experience, research, something that the military was sensitive to, that if they had come across things, they would have cared?
Right.
Or not? I'm just wondering if there's anything in the record that showed that this was something the military is sensitive to, going back to the early 1900s?
Yeah. I think in general, it wouldn't be just the military, just in general, development, construction, et cetera. I think until, yeah. I think until relatively recently, you know, if you found, certainly if you found a Native American site or Native American human remains, I think it's safe to say they were considered to be sort of an academic curiosity and something of interest to an archaeologist, but not to anyone else. And there are references in the Mass Site Form, in the Historical Commission's Site Form, that come from the Historical Commission's files about, over the years, human remains being identified, not by the Navy specifically, but even by passersby when the original Hingham Office, or Hingham Mutual Construction Project was being proposed for the area west of this parcel. Apparently, human remains were identified. And there's, there's literally no documentation for what became of those remains, or, I mean, there's anecdotal information that they went to the Peabody Museum, for example, or that the state medical examiner looked at them. But the Mass Historical Commission has absolutely no information about what happened after that, so.
And again, so now referencing Mass General laws, Chapter 38, Section 6, which is the one that requires anyone during construction or otherwise who comes upon skeletal remains?
Yes.
Is, how, is that something self-police, that a contractor has to know that and do that? Or is there anything special in connection with a site like this that's already a kind of, kind of, you know, flagged site? Is there, how, how is that handled?
So what you're referencing is called the Massachusetts Unmarked Burial Law, which is a statewide regulation. It applies to any land except for federal land, which has its own separate legislative guidelines for, for human remains being found. And that applies no matter what to any type of accidental discovery of human remains. So typically, what happens in projects that I'm involved in or that our company is involved in, if there is any indication, anecdotal or otherwise, that there's a possibility of human remains being accidentally exposed, even though we don't think they're there, we always provide the proponent, as I have done in this case, with, there's actually a one-page know-how sheet that the Mass Historical Commission has put together for what you do if human remains are accidentally uncovered. And it gives you a step-by-step guide for what you do under the unmarked burial law. And the first call is to the police, because they have to determine that it's not a crime scene. The police make a determination that it's not a crime scene and that the remains are likely 100 years or older. If they're less than 100 years, it's up to the police to decide whether they want to take jurisdiction or they want to pass it along to the Mass Historical Commission. So 100 years or older, after the police have investigated, the Mass Historical Commission comes in and does an investigation, and they make a determination, as best they can, as to whether or not the remains are Native American. If they determine that they are Native American or likely Native American, then the Mass Historical Commission consults with the Massachusetts Commission on Indian Affairs. And that office then takes jurisdiction, and the consultation basically occurs with the proponent or the developer or the landowner, and those two bodies. If the Mass Historical Commission determines that the remains are likely not Native American, then the state archaeologist maintains sort of jurisdiction over those remains. And typically, what happens is that there's a process that goes underway, a public process to identify descendants, if it's possible to do that, so that the, you know, in the case of Native American remains, the commission identifies the tribes that would be associated if they're non-Native. Usually, there's a public process to try and identify people who may be descendants based on whatever evidence and information you can come up with. So it's a very detailed, step-by-step process for what happens. And so I think, hopefully, that answers your question.
I mean, and from this board's perspective, it's important because what you've identified are state law obligations, which are not within the purview of this board to alter or amend. It's really, it's a parallel set of regulations, having nothing to do with this board's jurisdiction.
Yep.
And so I appreciate your outlining that.
Sure. Yep. And just to be clear, because there was a state archaeologist permit that was pulled for this project, the state is, did become involved in the, in the project. And so as part of that review, those are all things that were covered, both in our methodology, our testing, our results, and our recommendations.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone from the public with comments or questions? Oh, sorry, yes.
Beth Rothoff, 36 Pleasant Street.
I really appreciate your presentation and the ability to speak to you again. I did bring you a couple of examples of when we were looking through documents of bodies that were buried over on the broader spectrum of the thing, which identifies, including one that was, the informant was Herbert Foss, which I thought was interesting, that they were buried at the Hingham Tomb, or the Poor Farm, or there's different identifications. But also, I brought you another copy of the map, plus what I thought was the best documentation of the history of the property that was written up in the town warrant, so you guys would have it. But I understand that you've dug certain areas that will be excavated for this parcel, but when we have documentation of over 100 bodies buried there, plus we have a map drawn by the historian of the town, John Richardson, which documents that there were bones found there in '74, '83, '86, and, I can't read the other date, sorry.
I think in the 80s. I, yep.
On that site, is there, and I know there are all these rules and regulations, but is there somebody on site when the excavation is done to, to acknowledge if there is something found?
Let me answer that in two parts. So the first part is, I, you may have some information that I did not have at the time that we were doing our study and that we wrote the results up of our report. I did sit with Andrea Young at the Historical Commission, and she had pulled out all of the information that the Historical Commission had about the Poor Farm and anything related to the project itself or the project area. I had spoken to her in advance, and she had pulled material out. I believe I have all of John Richardson's handwritten notes because they are attached to the archaeological site form for, not the Poor Farm Site, but for the Native American Site. And based on the map that was in his, and I would, after we're done, I would like to look at those, if you don't mind, but based on the map that was with the archaeological site form, the locations of bones that were found were actually to the west of this current proj, of, I keep saying current, to the west of this parcel, in the original location where the Hingham Mutual Fire Insurance Company was planning to build, to construct their building. And that because the human remains were found, they actually abandoned that site and constructed the building where it is today. So I think, I'm not, I don't think that you're confused about where that location is, but I think it can be confusing when there's a discussion of, of bones being found at the Hingham Mutual Fire Insurance Company's building site. So according to the records, the notes that I read that John Richardson put together, there were bones found in perk tests that were put in at the original site, and that part of the reason the park was, the parkland was set off was because there had been human remains found there in the past. I also didn't, it seemed, it seemed interesting to me that where the Towne-Poor Farm was located, which that location, the house, the building itself is very clearly known where it was, and it was there until, I think, 2006, that there, there are several maps that show various outbuildings and things of that nature that are part of the Poor Farm, but I did not find any evidence or records that documented where the cemetery would have been, if there was one. And based on my work in other communities that had town farms, it seems like the cemetery should have been located relatively close to where the building was. So I understand that the, that the structure that's in the hillside in the project area that may or may not have been the tomb that is referenced in the town records, that may have, in fact, been something that was associated with the Poor Farm. But I was not able to identify any, any evidence that showed that there was a cemetery that surrounded that structure where it is in the hillside today. And again, it just would seem, it would be unusual if that rough, kind of very steep hillside had been used as a cemetery, so. So that's the first part of your question. And the second part about, about monitoring during construction, we don't typically do that. And the, and the testing methodology that we use on, in a project area like this, the reason that it has to be approved in advance by the State Archaeologist's Office is because it is designed to identify areas where there's a likelihood that there could be unmarked burials. And if, in fact, there ever were burials that were placed in the area where the development is going to happen, the extent of the ground disturbance that has occurred since the time that the Poor Farm was being used, in my professional opinion, and based on the results of our testing, it makes it extremely unlikely that there would be any, any remains left if they had ever been there to begin with. So in other words, the massive amount of, of sort of ground disturbance and earth-moving that went on as part of the Navy occupation, and then their subsequent demolition, I mean, one of the buildings, there's actually good documentation that one of the buildings, they demolished it, and then they dug a huge hole and just put all of the material from that building back into the ground, and we identified part of that when we did our testing. So there is no monitoring that goes on as part of the construction, and as I said, the mechanism is in place with the Massachusetts Unmarked Burial Law, that if anything is identified, the construction has to stop immediately, and the state has to be notified.
Okay. Thank you. I'll give you a copy.
Do you have an extra copy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And these are the, a couple of the death certificates that were certified by, I mean, cracking with a difference.
Thank you.
Jeff, I think I gave you one of these.
Yes, yep.
Oh, I've seen, okay.
I'm sure this goes to Emily.
It's the same thing that you said, okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
My other question is more for you, Susan, as to the documentation that the general court, and I believe it's Article 114, which is different than the burial, that you cannot build on a site where there was a 100-year-old burial ground, and I don't know, maybe you know more about that, but you, without going to general court. And I don't know if you've got any information on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the, the question here, right, the big question mark, right, giant question mark, is that there hasn't been able to be definitive determination that that is a burial ground. So you can't, you can't trigger a law if you can't determine that it's there. So it's almost like you have to back into it. They'd have to do excavation first and find the burial ground, then have to stop and call the state in before any laws that would restrict them from building, like in the way you mentioned, Hingham Mutual moved their site because they found some evidence.
Right.
So because no one has documented that it is there, for the purposes of law, you can't assume it is. It would, I think they'd have to find evidence first.
So even though you have documentation that there are bodies buried there through history?
Yeah, I don't.
So just so, just so I'm clear, I've not heard that there's any documentation of anybody buried on the site that they will be disturbing. Are you saying that there is? Because that's what I want to be clear about.
No, I can't say specifically to that.
Right, okay, but that's, I think it's the issue that Susan's raising. So what I've heard is there's no evidence that there is. What you've presented does not say that there was anybody ever buried at the site that they will be disturbing. And that's the issue that, that we're looking at.
Okay. I just look at it as, since the military allowed the Alm's House to exist while they were building barracks and assorted other things, you would make the assumption, I hope, that they would have been protective of that gravesite, and they would have known it was there because it was during the period where we have documentation of bodies being buried there right up until that time. So if we know they protected it, and where they put their barracks and assorted other things was not on the burial site, and we know that the excavation of the Back River Condos was done appropriately, and that they would have stopped if they had found burial remains, and we know that, for example, burial remains were found when they did the Hingham Mutual, and they moved the site to a different location, the amount of land that's been non-disturbed or not excavated.
But all this land has been disturbed, is what I've heard, is that the entire site that we're looking at has already been disturbed?
Yeah, that's, that's the conclusion that we came to.
So everything that they're going to put their things, even though they're expanding it above the space where Hingham Mutual is?
Yeah, that's where we did our testing, actually. We tested all of the, all of the grassy areas, that the little marginal areas where there has not been development so far, and there is proposed to be disturbance as part of this, this project. We did test in those areas, so.
And Beth, I don't know if you've seen it, I don't know if you've seen it, there is a fairly detailed plan of the ammunition depot that was done by the Navy that shows every single, and- And I don't know that they would have, if they were that detailed in their plan, if they would have showed something like that.
Yeah.
But it, it doesn't show it. Now, that's not definitive, obviously.
Yeah.
But it just kind of leads to the, if people knew it was there, why didn't they put it on plan?
Right, exactly. And that was our conclusion, too.
So, that we would know for sure, right.
And so, to maybe not, not alleviate your, your concerns, but just to be clear to you, going into this project, before we did any ground disturbing work at all, we were aware that there was, there were burials associated with the Poor Farm somewhere. So, one of our major research efforts, as well as the field effort, was to, was to find out where that was. And based on all of the research that I did as part of this project and the archaeological testing, we were not able to find any evidence to say, okay, it was here, or it was here, or people were just buried, you know, across a 50-acre parcel. And I do think that's unusual, and I do think that if the Navy came in and there was a cemetery, you know, they wouldn't have blitzed the cemetery to put a building up at all, you know? So, it doesn't mean that there wasn't, that people weren't buried somewhere on the Poor Farm property, because you're right, there's, there's certainly evidence that people died while they were living at the Poor Farm, and that they were buried somewhere. Right, right. So, I think the question then becomes, are we able to identify that location or those locations? And as of today, I don't think that information has been located or identified. And the archaeological testing that we did in the areas that are proposed for construction just backed up the fact that not only did we not identify any evidence of burials or human remains, but we also documented extensive soil disturbance. So, any of the things that, as an archaeologist, I would have looked for, that would have triggered to me, oh, maybe this was a burial ground, you know, like either depressions or hummocks, where there could have been some kind of a stone marker. If those had ever been in this, in this project area, they're gone now because there's been so much ground disturbance that has occurred over time since people may have been buried on the Poor Farm property.
I appreciate that. I have one last question, which is not completely related, but is related in the sense that the town voted to put a marker up for these unmarked graves, which is done and at the DPW, and is cited for somewhere along Beale Street. We are trying to find the place for the actual boulder so that the plaque can be attached to it and set. I know there was some discussion as to sidewalks and parking spaces along Beale Street. That would be, in my opinion, significant for the location of the boulder. We would like to get it done and up since it's been a long process. So, I don't know if there's any determination at this point as to where that is going to be, so that we could, there's a meeting on next Tuesday to talk about the location of the boulder. If there's any information, it would be very helpful.
Yeah, I've talked to Mrs. Rockoff about that, just generally, as long as it goes on town land and, you know, we can coordinate with them, say, for example, it's near the Fields, yep, we'd like, we'd talk to you about helping to, you know, fix its placement, et cetera, yeah.
Jeff, have you provided Beth with the plans of showing where the sidewalk and parking spaces are going to be, so they know what areas wouldn't be disturbed?
We'll do that. I don't think we have very specific plans down on that side, but we can get something to her, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I am Harry Daniels. I live at Ten Hare and Way in Back River Condominiums. Through you, I have a question, and that is, as I understand it, Hingham Mutual originally proposed to put their building at, at location, I'll say, location A. In the process of doing that, they determined that location A was inappropriate, and they located their building at location B, which is where it is now. Did you, in the course of your research, have the benefit of Hingham Mutual's work relative to location A, which caused them to move from location A to location B?
The information that, that is available, that I reviewed, is part of the Mass Historical Commission's site form for the Native American Bear Cove esker site, and it includes a hand-drawn map that John Richardson made of the area that was originally part of the Hingham Mutual Fire Insurance Company's building site, and the locations at perk tests where human remains were reportedly found. There is also a plan that I believe you provided, Mike, that shows, it's, it's an engineered plan that shows the original A site, if you will, for the Hingham Mutual Fire Insurance Company, and it is west and south outside of the project area.
So, where the Broadstone Buildings will be located does not implicate where human, does it not implicate what I refer to as site A?
No.
Exactly.
That's correct.
That's right. That's my understanding.
Yep, that's correct.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, Jim Clark, 79 Tower Road. Good presentation.
Thank you.
The question is, we have a cemetery that nobody can find, and these people were buried by the town of Hingham, on the town of Hingham's property, that was specifically for that purpose, to live and finish their time out there. And all the death certificates that she has and stuff, there's a lot more, they tell you that they were built, they were buried on the Alm's House cemetery, which would indicate it's in one property or the other. The question is, whose responsibility is it to find them before you start digging?
Well, I, I think what we've heard is that where they start digging will be in an area that has already been disturbed. And so, to the extent that if that had been the location, there's nothing left to disturb that's relevant to your concern.
Well, I had asked, floated around the building, I don't know, it would be real nice to get an overlay of all the buildings that were ever on the property, and that would show you what's been disturbed and what hasn't been.
I'll ask Holly about this, but I think that's, that, this is, in fact, the analysis that you did.
Yeah, that's correct. And there are a lot of publicly available sources of information for where the Navy buildings were. There are aerial photographs, there are plans and things like that. So, the disturbance that I'm referencing, that we documented archaeologically, it's not just from the Navy occupying the land and putting up their buildings and then being on the property for a period of more than 50 years and using the land over that time. The disturbance is also associated with the demolition and removal of those buildings, which, which likely caused more ground disturbance, actually, than the Navy occupying the site to begin with.
I, I understand, thank you. The issue, I think, that the narrative that gets built is incorrect, and the general public doesn't know that, that this property was bought in 1833, and it carried on for 100 and some odd years. The Navy moved in in '03 or '04, '05. They bought everything on either side of the river and all the way out, except this property. So, the Navy wasn't there all that time. The Navy only bought this property in 1943, halfway through the war, because they needed a buffer zone. So, none of these buildings that you see here by the Navy were even built until 1943. And they weren't used very often because the war ended two years later.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what happened, the First World War, this was built for the First World War. They were going to buy the Poor Farm the First World War, and then the war ended. So, they put it off, and they didn't buy it. So, here we are, burying people on site, and nobody knows where they are. All the research I did in all the other communities all over the state and country, methodical records in that time, peminship is impeccable. Detailed, here we can't find anything, except the death certificates.
Yeah.
It's my understanding legally, if you don't have a certificate saying you moved them, they're still there.
Legally, yes, but I can tell you in point of fact that I have worked on many, many projects where, you know, either a cemetery was reportedly relocated or never existed, you know, that remains are found where they shouldn't be, and they're also found where they were reportedly moved.
I understand. Rhode Island in New York has a million, 2 million people, you know? They moved from Washington Square Park. But the point being is, nobody's identifying anything here.
Yeah.
And we keep building and building. Pretty soon, they'll all be gone, you think?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I will tell you, too, that I'm.
And we know there's a cemetery there.
Yeah, and I'm at a disadvantage because there wasn't an archaeological survey done before the townhomes were built, and the Poor Farm building was removed. So, that would have been, if there had been work done, you know, that obviously would have been something that I would have.
They almost saved that building.
Initially, so, yeah, I mean, it's, I, it's frustrating, I'm sure, to hear an archaeologist tell you that we, we didn't find the information, and that I can't answer your question. So, like, all that, all that we're able to do is to say, based on everything that we've done professionally, both in research and in.
I'm not doubting you, right.
Ground disturbance, I don't know where they are.
Although I can tell you, we have one of those, one of those relative, we have one here, there's three people buried over there.
Oh, really?
He's in the building, he's in the room.
Oh, geez, okay.
You were looking for them, now you found them. I'll give up, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I appreciate your report, we all, we all do.
Sure.
Because it's an area that I think the town is sensitive to.
Mm-hmm.
And we're concerned about, you know, respecting what's, what's gone before us.
Mm-hmm.
But my understanding is that, moving forward with this project, there would not be new disturbance that would affect graveyards or, or Native American sites.
Yes, that is correct. That is, that's my professional opinion, and backed up by the findings of the study, and reviewed by and concurred with by the state archaeologist's office. So, yes, that's the conclusion.
If something is found, then.
Then there is a procedure, yeah. And the Mass Historical Commission would become involved again, and then there would be consultation, and, and the process would be opened up again. And then, you know, depending on how that proceeded, you know, you would, you would make decisions based on that.
Okay.
I have one last question. The to-do list that you mentioned, can you just provide a copy to Emily so that she's aware of?
Absolutely, yep. Yep, it's actually on the Mass Historical Commission's website. I will, I will send you the PDF, but I will also send you the link so that anybody who would like to have that can have it.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yes, great, thank you. So, what we'll do is, we're going to have Brian O'Connor from Cube 3, and then I'll begin making some comments at the front side. Is it possible to dim the light? Because I think what we'll do is, it might be helpful to have the PowerPoint, we can go through that.
You want to assist the Emily, or?
Thank you, Holly.
Keep going. Is it all the way down? Well, that's dim.
There we go.
Sorry.
All right, I'm going to stand up, if that's okay, just be able to turn around, bring the microphone closer. What I wanted to do, just as, as a prequel, if you will, of just the discussion on the art, the texture, is to comment on a, a letter that we submitted, and what it is, is a submission that's in response to counsel for the abutter over at Back River Condominiums from November 28th, having to do with just comments on the scale of, scale and character of the proposed, the proposed project, and also the consistency with our respect for Hingham's historic design and development patterns. And we disagree, and what we did was, we did submit a letter, which is based on the assessor's information, and with that, I can just go through and summarize what some of our findings were. First of all, the surrounding zoning classifications, which is of interest. What we've got is, within the half-mile surrounding the property, the property is in red here, and what's interesting is, the red is Office Park, so that's the one existing Office Park zone that, you know, that this is proposed for. And then what we have additionally is, to the south, we've got the Bear Cove Park, which is official open space, we've got the Lynch Fields, which comes up a little neck, and this is official and open space. And then what we have is, we've got over 500 units of multifamily housing, beginning at Back River, and then moving back to the east, and it consists of Hingham Woods, the Beal Cove Village, and then again, the Back River. So, we're looking at, I think it's 520 units, multi-unit residential housing, which is, you know, basically what the classification will be for the Alliance site. So, with respect to the immediate surrounding neighborhood to the east, it's, in effect, the same use. What we've got across the street, going from the west at the junction of Lincoln Street and then Beale, you can see this first piece in, in the purple, and then over across to the shipyard, also going up in this area, this is all industrial. So, industrial land, as we all know, across the street. We're looking at the 99 Restaurant, and I, you know, basically supply some of the details on this, but we, you know, I'll, I'll leave that for anyone who wants to take a look. 99 Restaurant, the old Stagecoach, and then we're looking at the Super Stop and Shop, the Marshals, all of the uses, the Weight Watchers on the outside. We've got the Rockland Trust, which is here, and then we've got Terry Drive. Picking up on the other side, it becomes a limited industrial, and we've got Bright Horizons, which is in here. We also have the Memory Center. We've got the Bank of America, then we go into Hitchcock Shoes, Extermination. We go into the Hingham Toy Storage, which is about 38,000 square feet of, you know, just an industrial building with different automotive storage, industrial uses, dog daycare. And then from there, we start to go across Churchill, and then, of course, we come to the Talbets, this resumes the industrial zone, but we're looking at the Talbets, you know, worldwide corporate headquarters, and then from there, we go into the Faneuil Kitchen Cabinet, which then comes up to the corner of Fortler Road. So, what we're looking at across the street, up to Fortler Road, and we could keep going into the, you know, the multifamily over here, which is the Weather Vane, but we're looking at all industrial, limited industrial, and then industrial. So, the immediate neighborhood consists of multifamily, this is, you know, the basically residency, we're looking at these industrial uses. Jumping across, and again, right here at the opening to the shipyard, this is a thousand, only a thousand, excuse me, only 1,000 feet away from the subject property, we're looking at all of this being industrial use, and as we know, we've got the mixed-use overlay, which went in for, for that area. Talking about, you know, just kind of development patterns, if you will, for the neighborhood, you know, this is a relatively recent zoning change to allow for the mixed use, as you all know very well. And what we have here is, we've got various, for example, just concentrating on the residential properties, and talking about, you know, character and scale for this area, we're looking at, for example, we've got the Moorings 2, which was just permitted recently, we're looking at 77 units, density 42 units per acre, maximum height 64 feet, and that's only 1,300 square feet away. So, that's basically the 64 feet equates to five stories of height, which would, of course, be taller than what we're proposing here. We look at 111 Fitzroy, which is one of the Avalon Buildings, we're looking at 91 units on less than three acres, 31 units per acre, five stories, and that's only 2,500 feet away from the subject property. Going down to Avalon, the other building, which is 152 Shipyard Drive, 144 units on less than 10 acres, about 10 acres, 14.5 units per acre, three stories, and that's only 2,300 feet away. And then continuing, we've got the Moorings, which is kind of that, the north residential building in the shipyard, and, you know, we're looking at a max height, for example, of that, of 64 feet, and then that's basically 28 units per acre. And then the Lennar, of course, which is all in this area, we're looking at 150 units on 23 acres, three stories in there, and that's about a half a mile. So, what we did is, we wanted to come through and identify, you know, if there's a statement that it's out of the scale, out of the character, our team looked at each other, and we said, that's not what we see, and that's not what we, we always see. So, we wanted to get the details. Additionally, well, let me compare that to. So, we wanted to get the details. Additionally, well, let me compare that to what Broadstone Alliance is proposing for this property. It's basically on over 12 acres, slightly over 12. It's only 18.2 acres, units per acre, which, you know, compares very favorably to what we just talked about over across in this area, about, you know, 1,000 plus or minus feet. And then what we're looking at is a height, a max height of about 63 feet. So, that falls within, you know, the range of what we're talking about just over in this area. What we're also did was, we looked at the 319, the, you know, the Avalon 2, to take a look at, for example, right here, very close to the Bradley Woods neighborhood, excuse me, right here, very close to the Bradley Woods neighborhood, single-family residential neighborhood. And they've got 190 units on three, only 3.8 acres. That's 50 units per acre. Again, Broadstone's only 18.2 units per acre. The height of that is 65 and a half feet, so it's comparable. And, again, that's in this area recently, recently approved, and we'll be looking at demolition of that, the Building 19 site, pretty soon. So, running through and taking a look, we believe that, you know, the proposed, the proposed development on the 12 acres, it is comparable, we can point. Nothing's exact to it, but it falls within parameters that have been approved. Some under 40B, some under a mixed-use permit, but all that are there, that are existing, that are in use today and are part of the fabric of the town, and then also this portion of town. With respect to the exact, let me put it this way, the Hingham's historic design and development patterns. We all know that, you know, let's say, from the last century on, we're looking at this site being a combination of industrial uses, wartime uses with the Shipyard. We're also looking at a situation where we had the United States Navy, the Ammunition Depot, from about, I think it was 1908, which, if you go into the planning office, there's actually a huge, beautiful, black-and-white photograph that shows that area in its heyday. If you remember, for example, what Lincoln Street looked like back in the day, when, you know, let's say, the 1970s, we actually had railroad tracks all crossing underneath Route, well, Lincoln Street went over. So, that, we had these humps up over railroad tracks. This is an industrial area. And as it's gone forward, you've got an infill of these commercial uses, et cetera. It's infilled in a way which is not necessarily similar to other parts of town, so it has its own history. So, what we did was, we looked at, for example, it was, you know, basically right next door to us is the multifamily development at, at Back River. And we looked at that, and we know, of course, back in the mid-2000s, that was also Office Park-zoned. So, it had the same exact zoning classification as the property that we're looking at, exactly the same. What happened was, it was a development agreement with the developer that allowed for it to be changed to a residence E, multifamily, and then that proceeded forward. And again, I've, I talked about the 520 units all in this area. What we have is, we've got a situation where, you know, it might feel like single-family houses, and they're really nice, and, you know, I've got friends who live in there, and I've been to those beautiful places. Values approach or eclipse a million dollars per unit for the market-rate units, but it's multifamily housing. It's multifamily housing, which is done very well. And then, you know, Alliance is another form of the multifamily housing. So, with respect to the history, that property was part of, you know, the poor farm, the ammunition depot. Let's keep going forward, you know, when it was made into Office Park, and then ultimately, it was, you know, changed to a residential use. There's no difference when you go through that history. We've got a similar history. And, you know, I think that claims that there's somehow some development pattern right here which adheres to Hingham, and right next door, somehow, you know, this doesn't adhere to Hingham. I just don't think that, you know, that's factually supported. When we go through, looking at, and we did look through some of the history of what happened with Back River, for example, there were variances which were, which were obtained that had a requirement of a 50-foot vegetated buffer from other property lines, so that if the variance wasn't obtained as part of all of the development, there would have been a situation where the units weren't, for example, 20 or so feet off of the property line where the sheltry path is, with a single row of some plantings. That would have been enhanced, it would have been, you know, a greater buffer area. But the fact is, is that the variance was granted, and those houses were built in the current condition. What you'll remember Alliance did was, their original proposal had the building about 100 feet away from the sheltry path. In response to talking to folks next door, and what they did was, they pulled it back over 220 feet, to about 224 feet. And then also, if you look at the plans they've committed to, there's basically a berm, extensive plantings, et cetera. So, in effect, provide, you know, screening for this property, which would be, you know, four times what would have been, which would have been required over on Back River. So, I think that as we look at it, and we look at the efforts, and we look at the investment that's being made, I think that we can show a good, you know, good faith basis for, for going forward and putting the project before the board. And with that, I think the final, final comment that I would make is that, you know, right across the street, there is the side of the Stop &amp; Shop. When you turn the corner around on Terry Drive, you're looking at the loading docks for the Super Stop &amp; Shop, et cetera. It's, it's a mixed-use neighborhood. It's been a successful neighborhood, and it's a place where people like to live. The amenities that are here, whether it's the Stop &amp; Shop, the Marshalls, these are, these are amenities that are available for, for folks. And if they want to go somewhere, they want to live somewhere, they want to have shopping, they want to have all of these amenities. It's something that we created when the Shipyard was permitted. So, we actually looked at a mix, a living mix of residential, different commercial, office, et cetera, because the town recognizes the value to the town, to everybody, of having mixes. By introducing this residential zone, where it's currently zoned for Office Park, what that does is, in our opinion, it continues that trend, and it is consistent with, with this area. I can answer questions, or if you want to go forward with Mr. O'Connor, and he can continue on our, you know, architectural issues. I can go anywhere.
I'd like to, you know, architectural issues.
Excellent, okay. So, if, I'll keep the lights off, and if, Brian O'Connor from Cube 3.
Yeah, there we go. Sorry? It's actually, okay. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm just going to run through fairly quickly a few of the key changes, look at some of the architecture, and try to bring everybody up to speed. As, as everyone may or may not know, we're, we're back down to 220 units from 300 as part of the amendment. The original proposal had several sections of building that were five stories, and, and the project is now three stories and four stories. So, there's no longer any elements of the buildings that are five stories high. So, that was a fairly significant reduction, especially when coupled with the, with the unit reduction. And then, as Jeff mentioned, we increased the setbacks from the townhomes. So, we're, we're now a little bit over 220 feet away from the, from the townhomes on, on that edge. The parking garage, which also was previously a fairly prominent element of the plan, has been removed, and it's now buried below the buildings, which we think is also a significant advantage, particularly from Bear Cove Park. So, the parking garage used to be in this area. Parking is now completely below the buildings. And again, this is just sort of to refresh everyone. This is the, the setback that Jeff was talking about over there. So, the setback from the townhomes over on that edge is now over 220 feet. And on Building 2 in particular, which, which was primarily a five-story building in the last pass, is now all four stories, and then steps down to three as you come toward the front edge of the site. Yep. So, as we define the architecture of the project, really, the goal here was to, was to approach a coastal New England design style. And what that really means for us is a few things. We really wanted to break down the mass and the scale of these buildings. We do recognize that they're, they're larger than some traditional coastal New England, and we think we have a great strategy for doing that. We did take a very contextual design approach. If you look at the Back River townhomes and you look at where we are now, there's actually a very similar underlying design language to what we're doing. The scale is a little bit different, but a lot of the materials, the detailing, you know, our, our proposed buildings are primarily clapboard siding with cedar shakes. We have included fairly substantial window and building trim, divided light windows. The buildings are really framed at the lower level with columns and porches, creating active outdoor spaces. We are proposing a fairly traditional color palette. If you take our elevations and you put them up against the Back River townhomes, they really do appear to blend together, very similar color palette. And then we are using pitched roofs to hide mechanical equipment and control noise on the top of these buildings. And if we just quickly look at, um, this is just going to be a quick study of, of how we're actually proposing to break down the massing. So, a few of the key things that we've looked at doing here are really varying the roofline and creating articulation in the roofline to eliminate this sort of perception of a consistent eve anywhere on these buildings. And we've sort of highlighted some of those in, in red. Pulling away from the townhomes and reducing the unit count has also allowed us to minimize any sort of long expanses of continuous elevation. So, we were over 900 feet in some areas, and now we're just a little bit over 200 on these elevations as they come down. We've also, and over on the right-hand side, one of the keys to the plan in reducing some of those long elevations is allowing the building to articulate and bend more. And it does cut and create corners where we're creating outdoor courtyards sitting on top of the below-grade parking, which we think is a big advantage to the plan. We're integrating bays into the architecture as well to create texture and rhythm on the building facade, and further manage any, any of the longer facade elements that are left. And then we also are integrating, over on the left, left side here, some, some really nice two-story elements to the plan, where we have leasing amenity space that are also framed by porches and columns, similar to what we, we see elsewhere on the site. So, this is the setback section, which I think is really instructive. We did just want to walk through maybe a little tiny bit more detail about what Jeff was referring to. If we say we're over 224 feet, or about 224 feet away from the property line, there is an additional backyard setback on the property from the actual townhomes. And what we did is, we looked at sort of understanding the, the view cone, starting back here on, on the street within Bear Cove, within the townhomes, and looking at sort of what you would see and how you would see it. And the reason we did this is, we really wanted to highlight a few things that are integrated into this buffer, that we think are really critical. Maybe the most important piece is really maintaining that existing mature tree line that does exist on the edge of our property. By pulling the buildings away and pulling the parking away, that's maintained. And then really creating and maintaining a berm over on the edge of that mature tree growth that's over six feet high, and that is over 130 feet from the property line. So, if you're actually, you know, even within the townhomes or within the development on the street, we just really wanted to kind of illustrate the, the length we're going to, to really create a nice buffer and a great separation there. It's actually, it's on the computer, actually.
I think we put it in the projector, actually.
This, this is actually, yeah. So, one of the, one of the things we also wanted to do, and you may or may not have, have seen these in, in past presentations, these are really just views of the Back River townhomes from the street in front, looking towards our project. And the sort of a, an evergreen screen here, this is a winter view, so it really is sort of in the, the least vegetated state. And you can just barely see above those existing evergreens, kind of the edge of our, of our building in the distance. Brendan, do you want to just advancing this for me?
Yeah.
Thanks. Yeah. This is, this is another view in summer, and you can see there's really just a little bit of additional vegetated cover here, but it's effectively the same view, so. So, the other thing we did is, is we went out, Mike and his team went out there and floated balloons that really identify the corners of where we think these buildings are going to be. And, and what we did is, we included a few quick views. This is from the sheltry path. So, if you're standing on the sheltry path, Bear Cove Park is, is to your back, and you're kind of coming up the hill, that balloon, if you just advance it one more for me, Brendan, right there, is actually the uppermost corner of the building in this, in the view from here. And what's really important to note is that there's actually no building that would exist to the right. So, any building in this view is actually further over to the left as you're coming up the path. And if Brendan goes a little further, you can actually see, you, you could make the argument that in some cases, some of these views are getting better. That's the existing office building that would actually be removed, so. Keep going. And again, this is a balloon study from Bear Cove Park itself. You can see the existing townhomes right here. And then, if Brendan clicks forward, you'll be able to see, those are the two balloons that illustrate the top two corners of the, of the proposed building. So, I think what's instructive here is, from Bear Cove Park, I, I think you can probably tell that there's maybe potentially a greater impact on the views from the park of the existing townhomes than there would be from the proposed development. But we did just want to sort of highlight those, so you could see where the corners are. Okay. Again, so, you know, we really just wanted to hit on a few of the highlights. I think within, within the architecture here, the key is to really use those traditional materials, use them in ways that we think are consistent with the language in Hingham, consistent with the way the townhomes are put together, focus on material palette, color palette, traditional, you know, sort of building materials. And we, we think we have a, a really nice solution for blending reduced height and reduced density with a, a consistent material palette, so.
Questions, comments?
Do we have a planting plan for this?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, JP, yeah, we'll put it together, and you don't have it. If you need more, we can supplement.
Can we get the lights?
Well, you know, I appreciate your presentation, thank you. I also appreciate your thoughtfulness to the residents at the Back River residential condos, and the views and the balloon testings and the sightlines from, you know, the Back River area. But there is nothing here that you're showing us that actually impacts the view that all of us will see as we come and go from Hingham, which is the front side of the property. Which, and, and that's one of them, but that's obscured by trees. So, why are you hiding the building? I just can't understand it.
Well, actually, all of the trees that are in this current view-
Pretend it's wintertime. I mean, I want to see the building. I can't see the building, and you're talking about your architecture, and it's just not available. And I, you know, I don't mean to jump on you like that, but just-
No, no, it's, yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's an important site. It's a gateway structure-
It's critical, yeah.
...for Andrew Penner-Hammon.
Agreed.
We worked on a project, Jeff and I, years ago, which is the Fieldhouse, which was-
Right.
We called it the gateway structure then.
Right.
And it was, because there was nothing around then, but now it's being surrounded by-
I think we're, we're happy to take the view, this view in particular, at the, at the main entry, and try to prune out all the trees, so we can really take a look at that, pull down the foliage.
Just to follow up, so-
We do, we do. Can you go to the closer, we have a closer, closer-up view of this that gets you past the trees, which, which may or may not be helpful. Yeah, there you go, Brendan. So, I don't know if you can kill the lights for one second. Here, in, in this view, and this may be not answering your question, because I know your question is really geared towards what's the view from the street. So, here, you're, you're up on top of the building. And, and I think the only reason we wanted this view is, you can start to see some of the, you know, clapboard siding, some of the integrated lighting, the columns, the porches, creating those more active outdoor spaces, the main entry to the building beyond, and some of the, you know, sort of horizontal lap siding that's really part of what we're trying to do here.
Some of, the detail is sort of lacking, I think. I'm not sure whether it was just something that isn't part of the model configuration. But, you know, the columns that just sit flat against the soffit, it, there's, you know, you-
Yeah, we-
The beam is missing.
Sure. We, we, yeah, we can absolutely provide more detail. What, what we were trying to do with the columns in particular is really model them almost, almost identically to the Back River townhomes, to really start to make some of those connections. And maybe what's, what's missing in the view is sort of the, it's at an angle where you can't really see the roof above it. So, I, I understand what you're saying.
You're sensitive to that, though?
Absolutely.
Of the various subtle details that really have that subtle.
Absolutely. We're, we're really worried about that. And we've also looked very hard at making sure that we're using window trim, both, you know, on the, on the jams and the sills and the heads that are fairly consistent with the Back River townhomes in terms of depth and size and dimensions. So, we're, we're happy to provide whatever details would, would help you guys, for sure.
Oh. Now, I have that package, too.
Do you have this?
Yeah.
The elevations?
Yeah, I have that in my-
Oh, you have that already? Okay. I didn't know if you had these in front of you.
I, yeah.
Okay.
But, and thank you for that. But it also, the extended overhang at the, at the, the fascia of the soffit, at the, on the fourth level, the roofix, overhang. Do you have any idea how, what, how far that-
Yeah, we do. We've actually looked, I think right now, we're projecting about a two-foot-six overhang on, on the edge there.
Does it, the rendering show it, it's sort of in the eight-to-10-foot sort of- Does it, the rendering show it, it's sort of in the eight-to-10-foot sort of scale, if you could--
Yeah, we're not proposing that. No, no. I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to create a really great shadow line on the building. We're trying to create a nice, strong edge. But what we don't really want to do is introduce anything that's too overtly modern, that it feels disconnected with the material. So, I think we're probably in the two-to-three foot range on that.
Yeah, some of these early drawings show--
Yeah, absolutely.
Wait, yeah.
Yep.
So, at some point, will we see sort of modified sections that have dimensional information on them?
Yeah, absolutely. We're happy to provide that, yeah. I think we're really sensitive to trying to make sure that we're contextually appropriate, so.
Yeah, it's a big building. We know that.
It is, right.
And I appreciate you trying to, you know, hide the heights with, you know, the passing and then the shadow lines and all of those various--
Yeah, no, we're happy to provide you some of the sections and the details with more dimension so that makes sense to you, sure. Absolutely.
So, Jeff, when do you think we can expect those?
You can expect those within--
Within a week, for sure, yeah, absolutely.
Within a week. And if there are no, I don't know if you got further questions.
Well, I just want to reiterate the point that I understood Alnie making. If I'm on 3A driving south to Hingham, then I make that right onto Beale Street, what do I see? What does that look like?
Absolutely. I'm sorry.
And then if I'm driving up Sergeant Terry, what do I see?
We'll get all of that to you. What we did, similar, you know, when we release something and then we get comments back from neighbors, what we do is really focus on them. And I'll admit, we kind of forget some of the other pieces. You know, it's dominated the front yard, the light poles of the Lynch Field, the Field, et cetera, and it's quite some distance from the street. So, we've got a situation where we do have something that shows the balloons, and, you know, we can get you some more of the information. It's so far away that it's, you know, these are easier to see because you're able to get really approximate to it. So, what we'll do is we'll get that in. The other pieces, we'll take away the vegetation. The point that Brian was making was interesting is that the big goal here is there's all of this great vegetation out front, and we're actually able to design around it and keep it. So, we got kind of excited about, you know, being able--
And that is exciting.
Yeah.
Something we want to encourage.
Yeah, so that's something that we just kind of owned, and we didn't really think that it kind of obscured a full analysis, which is right.
It is, but I appreciate your desire for a winter view. I understand that, so, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
The winter view minus the snow.
Plus 50 degrees.
Can I just make a note, because I know you're kind of focused on get rid of the trees, look at the building, but when you're talking about the approach of Beale Street, that's not the entrance design?
Correct.
So, I mean, I think if you're going to give the board members what you're looking at, it needs to incorporate the width of the roadway, the triangular island that's going to be in there, like, give it the full effect.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, it's just--
All right, great.
You could drop it into a sort of a Google Maps sort of an environment.
Yeah, we're happy to make adjustments to this. I mean, this is an underlay from Google, so we're happy to bring it in. Yep, absolutely.
Beautiful. Great.
I'm going to see if there's any questions from members of the public, but we should get the lights on so they don't trip going up to the mic.
I see, Lisa.
Good evening. Melissa Tully, 29, Back River. And I have some prepared comments as a trustee, but I'd like to make some comments just as a unit owner on just the past presentation. And can we get Jeff Tacchio's slide that had 3A and Beale Street, the first one there?
Ms. Tully, do you want me to dim the lights just a little?
Well, I think people probably couldn't see it enough. I probably look better in dim lights, but that's not--
Number two.
Okay, maybe you want to dim the lights.
I can't make it out, okay. Oh, great.
Jeff, would you help me with your little pointer there? So, your property, the Alliance property, is there in red and 12 acres. But it's really eight acres, really, that it's going to be built on, right? That there's four acres that can't be built on. And nicely, that's a good thing, because from Bear Cove Park, you maintain that, and there's going to be some buffer. So, it's really a back-up and around there. Then you have Lynch Field, and then you have Back River, which is 45 units, looks to me similar size-wise. I'm just doing this off the top of my head, because there wasn't in Jeff's remarks that. Then you have something looks--
Let me stop you. I'm having difficulty understanding because of the feedback from the H camp.
Okay, I'm too close.
Okay, there we go.
Okay. Then you have Beale's Cove. That's 198, and that's at least twice the size of what they're looking at. And then you have Hingham Woods, which is 277 units, and that's an enormous amount of property for 277 units. So, the density is not the same. The 220 on the eight acres is not the same as the density that is going down Beale Street. And as much as we like to call 3A Lincoln Street sometimes, it's 3A, and Beale Street is a street and not a Mass Highway. And they're two very different things. There are no, you know, the density on 3A does not, even though it's not far away, does not, in my mind, doesn't compare to Beale Street as far as what's acceptable and local practice. Okay. Now, I'm commenting as a trustee, and these remarks were made with my fellow trustees, Dave Beal, who's here tonight, and Nito Catalano, who is not. We, as trustees, are elected to manage the Back River condominium trusts. Usually, that has to do with landscaping and snow plowing and not issues--
Can we get the lights back on, please?
And not this kind of issue. So, we want to make it clear that we're speaking as the trustees, but as you know, as attorneys and CBA members, unit owners have their own opinions, and as is their right, and they may have a different position or idea than the trustees do. We reviewed the response letters from Alliance's attorneys, where a lot of the material about density and everything was in there. And as you have, the legal arguments are in front of you. We leave it to you, at your discretion, to make a good judgment on where you go with We understand the difficult and very unique position that the ZBA is in with this particular 40B. The looming May deadline for the interim safe harbor is huge. The Selectman's Agreement with Alliance is very different than any other 40B that you've had come before you. And there's the uncertainty as to what would happen not only with 230 Beale Street, but any of the other developable properties in town come the end of May, should this not be approved. So, we understand all of that. And with that understanding, we'd like to ask the ZBA's assistance in trying to minimize the impacts of the proposed development by Alliance at 230 Beale Street. And in particular, the massive four-story structure that abuts our property directly. We really appreciate all of the changes that you've made. It's a far better development or project with what's happened, but we still feel that there are some tremendous impacts with that four-story building abutting us. I'm going to do a little verbal math here, so hopefully you can follow me. The 2Beale Street property, you put in a bid $7 million something, 110 units, but in your proposal, you mentioned that it was $70,000 cost per unit. And when you look at the property here at 230 Beale Street, the purchase price that we have from Mass Highway, Mass Housing, is $12 million. You had the $1 million in that they're giving the town, that's $13 million. It comes out to $59,000 cost per unit that they are proposing. If you took the $70,000, you would get to 184 units, which would eliminate the fourth floor on the second building. Just saying, I don't know if this is the kind of map that's used in discussing these things, but you can look and say, on a very raw piece of property, they were willing to spend $70,000 per unit. This is a very highly developable and easily developable piece of property. It would seem that they can make the money they want to make with maybe 184 units in eliminating the fourth floor of the second building. We're also concerned with the barrier, the six-foot barrier berm. I think it's great, wonderful. We just want the devils in the details, and we want to make sure that those details really deliver the type of mitigation that is promised. This is just my small list. We've got meetings to go to go through what all the details are. And as I said, the devil is in the detail, and we anticipate being able to iron those out with you in the coming hearings. In that process, we look to the ZBA as the appointed guardians of the town zoning bylaws to do their best to protect the interests of the Back River unit owners, their abutters, all other abutters, and the town as a whole in their review of this application. And thank you.
Thank you. And I guess before, next, I think that was very eloquent, and I appreciate your comments. Thanks.
We appreciate the work you do.
Thanks.
Hi, Margaret Donabed, 47, Back River. And I feel exactly the way that Lisa does. I appreciate the changes that have been made so far to make this a little bit more palatable for us. I was reading the document earlier today, and I guess I just still, I take issue with when you say that you're respecting the design in the immediate area. And I feel, listening to you speak about the surrounding areas, mainly the areas on the other side of 3A, it doesn't seem all that reasonable to me that you take into account the sizes of the buildings far over there, the industrial buildings and what will eventually be built on the old Building 19 area. I just feel that right next door to a series of, if you want to call them multifamily housing, that you would be more sensitive to height on the side of our road and not so much take into account the size of Stop &amp; Shop or like things. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm Mary Jenkins.
Mary Jenkins, nine, Heron Way. To add just a little bit to what Margaret just said, remember, when all of us, Al, when you, when you look at your house, you don't look over, you don't look at a bird's eye view and go up in a helicopter and look down on all the surrounding ones, you look at what's in front of you.
So, to say that there's a four-story building over there doesn't matter, because my house is right here, and I'm looking at it there, and I'm looking at it coming here. So, I'm looking at it in front of me. So, the four-story, you know, who cares what's over there? As Margaret just said, we're looking to have something that fits in the neighborhood and has a neighborhood look to it. And the height of that building is going to jump out at everybody when they come down Beale Street. And that's the way we look at it, not from above. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Bruce Mulan, 39, Back River Road. Just to echo some of the comments on the southern side of Beale Street where all the development is, are there any residential housing there that is greater than two stories on this side of Beale Street, on that green space that was pointed out earlier? Does anybody know if there are any buildings on that southern side of Beale Street that are higher than two stories?
I don't think there are.
So, that whole--
What are you talking about?
This area, yeah?
Yeah.
That whole area.
I think they go up to two and a half stories.
Yeah, they go up to, yeah. So, basically, for example, the ridge line of your units is, the ridge line's 33, and then what happens is that base of the cupola, et cetera, brings it up to about 39 or 40 feet. And then additionally, you folks have this big box structure, which isn't a third story, I don't think, but it's plopped on the top of the roof. What's it called?
No, it's called a duck blind. It's an abomination, and we were fighting with the developer. We fought the developer not to build it, and unfortunately, we were unsuccessful. And we wish somebody would actually, somebody would actually take that down. We would fully support that structure being removed. Just on the other point, just to make echo what other people have said, when those balloons were placed, we also took photographs, and more importantly, we took photographs from second-floor bedrooms, and you can actually see the height of those balloons and the scale of the project where those balloons were is incredible. And we have, we can certainly provide photographic evidence, because we took a lot of photos. We didn't take, we took a few photos from the sheltry path and in the Bear Cove Park, but most of the photos we took were from the second-floor units, the second-floor bedrooms. And the scale of the proposed development is way out of line with what Back River looks like. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, you get two fourths of me tonight.
Now, do we have to turn up the heat so you can take your vest off? Or you--
Yeah. It's going to be cold Friday.
I'm Harry Daniels, 10, Heron Way, in Back River Townhomes. I would like to look at one of the letters submitted by counsel for Alliance, and that is in particular, the letter from Mr. Ward at the Nuttner, McClennan &amp; Fish Law Firm.
Yeah, I read the letter.
So, I don't need to go through that letter, but I would like to ask the board, in the exercise of its acknowledged discretion, to determine whether this project is consistent with local needs, that the board exercise that discretion in a way that is sensitive to the maximum extent to the local needs you've heard expressed by my neighbors in Back River. The letter, as the chairman and Mr. Kuhney recognize, seems to suggest that local needs is consistent with meeting the Chapter 40B 10% requirement. I submit to you that local needs of necessity has to mean more than that. Otherwise, the legislature would not have used the term "local needs" in that legislation. I live in Back River. To me, and I moved there because of the quality of life I envisioned having. This project, in my judgment, impinges significantly on the quality of life I have as a resident of Back River Townhomes. And I submit to you that the issues raised by my neighbors factor into local needs, and we look to you in the exercise of your discretion, which this letter recognizes you have. It is within your province to exercise your discretion in a way that is consistent with all local needs, not just the 40B requirement. And our interests as residents of this town and residents of Back River also should be a factor, a significant factor, in your assessment and determination of local needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, I think that concludes your--
It does.
--presentation.
Yes.
One of the most important issues from a local need standpoint is transportation, congestion, and that's a topic that I want to make sure we cover in an upcoming hearing. We should talk about schedules. Emily, what are we up for?
So, your third member will become unavailable again after February 6th. So, there--
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, sorry. So, we could potentially consider continuing the hearing to early February, potentially February 1st, assuming that Mr. Freeman is available that evening. If not, the hearing would need to be further continued, and we had previously-- If not, the hearing would need to be further continued, and we had previously earmarked March 1st as a potential hearing day.
Because I am unavailable the week of February 12th and the week of February 19th.
Correct, yep.
The latter week being the President's Day week.
And we know Joe Freeman will be unavailable the week of February 6th, so...
So I think the first, the first is a Wednesday night, the second is a Thursday night, which we can meet all of the filing deadlines for that.
The second is Groundhog Day. We could acknowledge that. So do you have a preference?
We'll do the same hearing all over again. Exactly.
No, we won't. But we will have Bill Murray show up for that. In terms of schedule, the first or the second?
I don't have a preference. I don't, I can do either. Do you have a hearing already scheduled for either of those dates? No, I mean, we do potentially have a joint meeting or a presentation to make to the planning board on the 30th, Monday, but...
That's not going to... Let's just do February 1st then.
Excellent.
Book for you? And we're going to cover sewer.
Sewer, traffic, civil. And then what we'll do is we'll also submit the additional architectural information, and then, you know, we can speak with Emily as to whether you want a more specific presentation on that. And with 1, 2, 3, that, I think, should cover the items that we've been asked to address.
When do you think you'd be able to get us the information so that we're not looking at it the same day, you know, for the first time? I just want to make sure. It'd be helpful if we got it sometime the week of the 23rd.
Oh, absolutely. And we've been...
And preferably even earlier, so ideally, peer review comments.
I won't give you everything at the same weight and give you everything at the same time, so we'll submit everything as it's available. Also, with respect to the peer review for both the traffic and also the civil, that's all ongoing and rather close.
Yep.
But also, I think we've been pretty good at hitting the dates.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Okay. Good.
Beautiful.
And then just, we do have a red line, I think, that came in of the waivers. I haven't had a chance to review it.
I have not reviewed it either.
But I, at some point, I don't know when, if you want to do that meeting or subsequent meeting, we do need to revisit that.
I don't think it would be this meeting. I think it would be subsequent.
Well, if, so once, it might be, it might be convenient if, for example, the, we've got the civil engineer there that evening, so if we make our submission, we can go back through and make sure that, you know, the waivers absolutely match up with that final plan that you folks will be seeing, and it might be a good opportunity for us to touch on, on those.
And, and to the extent that you are looking for a waiver on height, that should be specified as to which locations the height waivers apply.
Okay.
So we're not granting, we're not looking for...
Got it. So not just the max, for example, but to say, to 43 feet on these areas, maybe what we do is we slice the building up into some, a plan that slices up the roof levels and...
Right, so that we have a sense of exactly where you're looking for these waivers on the parcel, and it will not be considered a blanket waiver.
Great.
Emily or Susan, anything else?
Can we handle that by saying, for example, waiver not to exceed such and such and specific to the plans that have been approved, so that, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
It would, it would be really helpful if you or someone from your office, if you can get, if you can share that with Emily and me as far enough in advance, then if we feel like it needs more detail, we can make suggestions so that you could maybe refine it before the board reviews it fully. So the more refined we can get it before you're putting it up on a PowerPoint, the less work you'll have subsequently.
We're, I mean, we're at a point now, looking ahead, and I know a little more about what we've accomplished on the sewer, et cetera, so I'm of the opinion, or we're of the opinion, that some of these issues are really going to come down with, because we've listened to the peer review, et cetera. I'm thinking of the situation where, at the next meeting, we're going to be in a position where we're, we've completed our presentations, and I don't know at what point you folks will be prepared to close, but with the next meeting not being until, I believe it's March
1st. March 1st.
Right. That, that would give you folks a decent amount of time to, you know, talk to your peer review, et cetera, and get your work done emerging in March, you know, towards a finalization, if, if that suits you folks.
Yeah, I mean, so I would, our next hearing is not going to be the final hearing, and then we're going to have to figure out what additional work. There may be pushback from this board that you're going to have to consider.
Joe, your hearing, like your, your vote deadline is April 17th. Just to kind of, when you're talking about February, March, April.
And I don't know, the other, it also has to do with Joe's schedule on his recovery as well, so we have some moving parts between now and the next meeting.
Yep.
Actually, between now and the next meeting, he's, he's not even going to go in for the procedure.
Right.
Right. Okay, I would accept a motion to continue this to the 1st of February at 7:00 PM. So moved. And I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
We are continued.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
We have several other hearings, so please keep it quiet so we can continue.
I think I have a break, and I have two coming in.
Can you call, do have control all...
Al, it's tonight's.
It's tonight's.
I can't. No, but then, no, but you can, you should be able to do it by using...
There's no little twizy-whizy.
Yeah, but you know what? You can use, let's see, here we go.
Robyn, I can't, I don't have a mouse, so I couldn't write back to you.
Well, here, shut it up, shut it off and reboot.
I didn't save, oh, no, it's over. I didn't save before we did that, so let's escape, and I will do this one.
You may be overloaded.
Are the next two, next two hearings...
It's all a rage these days.
There's two here.
For me, while I'm waiting.
Good excuse, I'm going to go to the men's room.
Oh, because Joe's not here, so that puts you in charge. Joe Freeman not here yet.
Those are heavy size.
Can I get rid of all this stuff?
No. Who is that?
No, 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 that's the hearing we have.
Oh, okay, I was going to say, is that from Jim Ward?
Who signed it?
It does look like my letterhead.
It's from, yeah, it is.
Was it a good letter?
It, it's a good letter, but it's...
Because he hasn't come to any of these hearings, right?
No.
He hasn't said anything to me about it, so, which he wouldn't.
That's right. That was better than that.
Yeah.
Where is the 31?
So you have a package with 31?
I'm looking. Emily?
She just gave us this, which is...
Oh, oh.
Is that all we have for this?
Do we have Blaisdell?
Yeah. I know Robyn read it, got it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking right at it.
So it did not conform to zoning?
They got it down, they put it in that location?
And there's a second...
Yes. And Susan, are you going to stay here for the next hearing?
Well, you know, please do. I think...
That would be helpful.
The planning board may need me for something, but I haven't been paged yet, so I can hang.
Good, okay.
Hang out.
So the next item on our agenda is Patrick O'Grady for a finding under Chapter 48, Section 6, or a variance under Section 4A of the zoning bylaw and such other relief as necessary to add a second story to a non-conforming attached garage located 12.1 feet from the side yard setback, where 20 feet is required at 31, is it pronounced Blaisdell?
Yep.
Blaisdell Road in Residence District B. And do we have the honor of Mr. Devon here?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. I will, I will, the last time he was here, I don't know if I said this, but I typically say that he is always the best-dressed person at these hearings.
I take out the clothes that I'm here. You would never see me dressed like this in a garage. This building, this house, was built in 1972. And if you haven't gone by it, you can look at the pictures off the assessors website.
Thank you.
The garage was constructed in 1991 with a permit issued by the building firm. It is protected under Section 7 of Chapter 48, under the six-year and the 10-year statute. We're looking for a Section 6 finding, that the addition of a second story would be no more detrimental to the neighborhood. And all we're doing, and I'm playing the game of plan, is putting a bedroom on top of the second, on top of the two-car garage. This house is...
And this is fully attached to the residence? Right.
This house is in quite a bit of disrepair. It has been occupied for a number of years by people who didn't pay much attention to maintenance of the house. It needs some substantial updating. The first floor plan, the basement floor plan is not going to change. The floor plan is with the tax of five application showing... Yeah, the bedroom being put over the garage. Exactly. If you ride down Blaisdell Road, you will find that there are a number of houses that are two-story houses, two and a half-story houses. So it certainly would be consistent with the neighborhood. And I think the existing house is only two bedrooms, which would create the marketability problem.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
The existing house, it only has two bedrooms, which creates a marketability problem. Adding the third problem, the third bedroom would be, make the property, you know, justify the renovations necessary to bring the property into good shape. I can't find any reason why you shouldn't approve a Section 6 finding.
Let me ask, Susan, does this qualify for a 48, Section 6?
Yes, so if, if you look at the recent legislative change to Section 7, it says that if you have, which I understand from Emily this is the case, you have a structure that was built and the building permit was issued, but perhaps should not have been.
Right.
And then it's the more than 10 years, it now is giving it non-conforming status. So it is my opinion that the board looks at it as if Hatfield didn't exist or anything else. You would just look at it as a pre-existing, non-conforming structure and how you would handle that under Section 6.
So it gets... Non-conforming, because it can't be removed.
Well, that's what I meant by pre-existing, Graham.
Right, right. So it really is treated as if it had been constructed in conformance with zoning and then zoning changed?
Except for not under Hatfield.
But not under Hatfield, because it wasn't legal when constructed. So we ignore Hatfield, and you just look at it as a straight...
But for Section 6 purposes.
Yes, yep. That was the effect of the, of the legislative change.
Yep.
So the applicant has represented that there was a 1991 building permit that, and, but I've not yet confirmed, that authorized construction 12 feet from the property line...
Do we have that? I mean, that's easy.
I don't have, physically have the building permit, no, but...
I can try, I can go get it.
We should...
I don't, do you want to pause this for a moment, or take it up later? Okay.
So, no, you should, it's just more than a, yeah, no, no. So we need, that's sort of a necessary condition, is that the building permit authorized this. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And so we need that as part of the record.
You need, the garage was built in accordance with the permit, so you need the permit.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's not part of the submission?
Yeah, I've, quite honestly, I overlook that.
Okay, so that, I just, we should get that handled. And then go through the Section 6 criteria. Looking at, I share your view that I don't see a reason that it would...
Well, the only thing I know is that it's subtle, but the addition is not just a
Well, the only thing I know is that it's subtle, but the addition is not just above the footprint of the garage, it overhangs two feet beyond the footprint of the garage.
Not into the side yard?
Well, not, it doesn't further exacerbate the side yard setback, but it, I don't know, you tell me.
Extends the nonconformity.
Right, but, but the overhang is...
It's not into the front yard setback, but it's intensifying, it's...
But it, it conforms to the front yard setback.
Yeah, I know.
It doesn't create a not conforming.
That's what I'm asking, it's, it's extending, it's, it's...
Intensifies it, though.
Along that plane.
Along that plane. So unlike Hatfield where that's allowed as of right, this is actually an intensification, increase, it's not a increase of the scope of the nonconformity, right?
Well, so that's the question for the board under 48, Section 6, the, you could allow the reconstruction extension or structural change of a nonconforming structure, except that, unless it increases the nonconforming nature of the structure. So it's for the board to decide whether that extension of the nonconformity, as opposed to, you know, an increase or a, or less nonconforming structure does that.
The fact that it's not 20 feet, it's the 12.1 feet.
Right.
That's the nonconformity that we're dealing with. You know, the two-foot overhang, I don't think increases the nonconformity.
In addition, the plane of the nonconformity, so it's 12 feet from the side yard setback, now there's going to be two stories of structure that are 12 feet.
Actually, the overhang is closer to the 20 feet, because if you look at the plot plan that was, I gave you with the application. I have more copies over here. This, this line, the setback...
Where they're not parallel.
Yeah, they're not parallel, so you're minimizing to some degree the side yard nonconformity when you put the overhang in.
What, what the board might consider in trying to assess whether or not the, the nonconforming nature of the structure is increasing is Hatfield. I know Hatfield doesn't apply to this particular structure, but you may read some intent or, or how we treat other similar single-family structures with similar conditions that do...
I drafted...
Happen in the same way.
I drafted the original Hatfield amendment, as I'm sure you probably remember, and the intent behind the Hatfield amendment as originally drafted was to allow development as long as the nonconformity was not increased.
Mm-hmm.
And in Gil Hatfield's situation, using the phrase that Mr. Candy just used, you know, he in fact intensified the use by expanding within the nonconforming setback, but that was the intent of the Hatfield amendment.
Can we build in that language, or is it...
What do you mean? Well, you know, it's, this isn't, this isn't a Hatfield, um...
Right. So where is the overhang still?
Well, in the front. This is the existing footprint, but what it doesn't show is this is what the...
Oh, okay, so that goes there?
Yeah, that's the proposed new, so it's, it's exacerbating the existing nonconformity. Just, you know, you get into the minutia, where it's just, it's just that plane that isn't on the footprint, that's already been sort of...
But it's no further, it's not...
No, it's no further.
Right.
So how's it intensifying?
If you look at the main plan, though, the two-foot overhang is just consistent with...
Yeah, oh, no, architecturally, it's fine, I get all that, it's fine. So this, this plane is a proud of the...
Right.
The footprint, which is the nonconforming footprint.
Yep. But on the criteria, Susan, am I correct, what we're looking for is whether or not this is substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood?
So my excerpt from 48, Section 6, says instead that except where the alter, you, you, um, the bylaw would apply to any extension, reconstruction, or structural change of a, a nonconforming structure, except where the alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change to a single or two-family residential structure does not increase the nonconforming nature of said structure. I don't know that you need to make the finding of no substantial detriment under this paragraph of 48, but I can pull up the whole statute.
I've got, I thought they were coming in for a finding under 48.
Well, this is 48, Section 6.
Yeah, but that's not the finding.
That's not the finding language.
That's not the finding language.
Right, the finding language is substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood.
Right.
The language you are required to find is that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood.
Right.
There are two different paragraphs that apply, that, that finding applies to both?
No.
Single families and, and nonconforming, non-single-family structures?
I think the language that you're referring to is not the finding, it is, it's, it's a jurisdictional statement as to whether or not the bylaw applies.
What, the legis, the new bill or this? No, because look, it says, as amended 2016.
Okay, here, pre-existing nonconforming structures may be extended, altered, hold on a second.
Right.
Provided no extension shall be permitted unless there's a finding.
Right.
That such change, such an alter, so not substantially more than the existing conforming, nonconforming use, and I, the stat, the...
Use or structure.
The structure was read into it by the SJC to the neighborhood.
Right.
Right, so...
So that's the finding, I believe, that we're, we need to make.
Right.
It's at the very least twofold, you need to make both, that it's not increasing the nonconforming nature and this, no substantial detriment.
I don't think you need to make a finding that it doesn't increase the nonconformity, because I think what we're saying is that it can be extended or altered in accordance with those plans, and it's not more detrimental.
Right, but, but don't you also, I mean, it also says, I mean, you have to read the first part of this...
I mean, it doesn't increase the nonconformity, we know that, I mean, it doesn't make the side yard any shorter.
Well, I think that's a question for the board, but shall apply to any change?
But shall apply to any change or substantial extension of such use to a building or special permit issued, okay.
Issued after first notice of, I think, to any reconstruction.
To any reconstruction, extension, or structural change, and to any alteration begun, okay, after...
Except where the alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change to a single-family or two-family dwelling does not increase the nonconforming nature. So you could, let's pretend this is not the project in front of you, it's like Bjorkland, there's an undersized lot, an existing single family, they want to demolish it and reconstruct it in a different footprint, in a larger fashion.
And they were still going to comply with the setbacks and everything else.
Comply with everything, but you could determine that that would increase the nonconforming nature based on the particulars of what's in front of you.
Did, and they stand, and the exception was kind of a de minimis, I mean, the exception on the Bjorkland was a de minimis increase of the nonconforming nature. I mean, there is, there, that concept is built into here that if, so say this was, you know, the too high in one section, and they wanted to bring it up to meet the too high section, okay, it's all, they're not making it any higher, but they are still increasing the extent of the nonconformity, I mean, that's how it works. And so the question is, you know, from a percentage basis, if you say, okay, it extending out two feet, there is that de minimis standard under Bjorkland, and, but, you know, I apologize because I didn't really come prepared for this tonight, but, you know, it's not, I mean, what you're being asked to do is apply a Hatfield standard where Hatfield does not apply, and Hatfield doesn't exist under mass general laws.
Right.
No, so in most other communities, this type of extension would be permitted pursuant to a special permit, since we don't have those provisions, we have to do it just under 48, Section 6, and I, you have the discretion to determine whether that is an extension of a nonconformity, or it's, or it's not. So I think if you find that it increases the nonconforming nature of the structure, then you don't need to make the finding, it has to be a variance, right? Because it says except where it...
Or you could find that there's a de minimis extension.
Right.
Which was the Bjorkland case.
I, I think it might, I mean, it sounds like because you don't have the building permit and everything else, you're probably going to push it off, but I, you know, I think arguments can be made on both sides, but you don't have enough factual information. I think if you had a little more factual information, it would be easier for you to make a, you know, determination one way or another.
Is it possible the board would be willing to consider, you know, resolving everything except the building permit, and let me submit the building permit after the hearing?
Once, if we were to close the hearing, you can't submit anything.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying you close the hearing, but get everything else out of the way and get the sense of the board as to where we're going.
So that you understand where we're coming from.
Right.
But we would not be voting, because we don't have a complete record here. So Emily, the first section that you were reading would say, does the zoning bylaw even apply, because it would not apply where alteration, reconstruction, or extension of structural, does not increase the nonconforming nature of the structure. So then that would, that's, that's not the finding, that's basically a determination that our bylaw would not apply. And the analysis is the Hatfield analysis that would get you there.
Except that that doesn't exist.
I, I understand, I understand. And I think Al's point, if I've got it right, is that in fact there is an increase in the nonconforming nature of the building.
Well, an extension, yeah.
The extension results in an increase in the nonconforming nature of the building, which doesn't mean they can't go forward, it just means that our bylaw applies. And then we know, go to the second part, which says that pre-existing nonconforming structures may be extended by state law, provided no such extension shall be permitted unless there's a finding by us that the extension or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental to the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood.
Well, there, there's a way that this building, that the structure could be extended, expanded, altered, without increasing that, for, so for example, if they wanted to put a family room off the back, and they did it conforming to the setbacks, and it just went straight back, they're altering the nonconforming structure, but they're not increasing any nonconformities.
Right, but that's not the case.
No, but I'm saying that's kind of the distinctions we're talking about.
That's right, that's right. So, as tempting as it is to use the Hatfield analogy, I don't think I want to go there. And I think I want to go to the finding, which is what...
But how do you get to the finding if the bylaw applies? The bylaw requires that a structure be 20 feet from the side yard setback, so how do you get around the bylaw under a finding?
But, I mean, are you talking in terms of the nonconformity?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the nonconformity is protected by state law.
It's protected, it can stay there, this is...
Adding to it.
Yeah, this is putting a second floor...
I don't think you can skip the sentence that precedes the finding.
Section 6 also says that you can expand or alter a nonconforming structure if there is the Section 6 finding.
Right, but you have, you can't ignore the preceding sentence that talks about increasing, so I gave an example of the way you can expand or alter it without increasing the nonconformity. The question is, is that what this is doing, there's an extensive body of case law on it, and, you know, I don't think that the case law that supports the argument one way or the other is presented here, but there's a way to extend, reconstruct, alter, without increasing the nonconformity.
This, this, Section 6 talks in the alternative, and it says that the zoning bylaw shall not apply, okay, where the alteration, reconstruction, extension doesn't increase the nonconforming nature. Alternatively, you have the Section 6 finding, which says that you can alter or extend if you make the finding it's no more detrimental.
I don't, I don't know that the case, that's the case law calls it an either/or. Do you have a case that says, has it as an either-or, Rob?
Say it again.
Do you have a case that says it's either-or?
No, but that's my reading of...
Okay, but you know there's extensive case law on this, so we know what the SJC thinks about it, we just don't have it here with us tonight.
Okay. Any thoughts?
Well, a couple of thoughts, I mean, obviously we have to resolve this and see what, what is the law, is it either-or or not, that's the first thing, and then with respect to, you know, we're gonna have to make a finding that it's not going to be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use. It appears there may be some neighbors here who want to speak to that, so maybe it would be helpful to hear from them.
Yep. Any other comments at this point?
No, not at this point.
So let's, why don't we hear from the neighbors and then we'll resume. So is there anyone here who would like to comment? If you can come up to the mic, please, and give us your name and address.
Hello, Anthony George, 15-25 Blaisdell Road, which would be the property to the east of the home, not to the west, which is the side where the 12-foot, 20-foot. I, I don't know that my concerns necessarily apply to this, but, I mean, I put in a call when I found out who bought the property. We've been waiting six years for this property to be cleaned up, and it hasn't. We have a new owner, and it's still not cleaned up. The fence that, that is, there's a pool on my side that has not been touched, there's debris, there's trash, it has not been cleaned up. A dumpster has come and I think it's gone, I don't know, is the dumpster still there? And will, I put in a call and I haven't gotten a call back. I, as a good neighbor, I'd like to know that you're, the property is going to be cleaned up, but I haven't had a chance. The fence is damaged on my side, if you have a pool, you need to be fenced off, there's big holes in the fence that were caused by trees falling down, almost hitting my property twice. The remainder of the trees that are right on the property are ready to fall over, I'm scared to death. So if we had a say in whether, it's, and, and are you intending, I don't know, are you intending to live there? No, you're intending to just flip the property. So, you know, Ingham's not necessarily a flipping the property kind of community. I would much rather see somebody come in, like across the street, he took a terrible property and turned it into something that I'm proud to live across from. I don't know what's going to happen with this property, so far I'm not seeing anything being cleaned up, and it concerns me, that perhaps we're just adding a bedroom and making 30,000, 40,000, and just passing the problem on to the next people. So until I hear that the property is going to be cleaned up, again, I don't know if this applies to allowing, and I, in listening carefully to... this applies to allowing, and I, in listening carefully to what you said, I tend to agree with Susan, or if, nonconforming, now you go up another story. To me, that accentuates the issue. Whether it's okay that it can be there today, that happened on the other side of my property, right up to 20 feet, a three-story monster house got put up, right to 20 feet. Now, that's what he could do, but I'll tell you, it's not pleasant to see a big thing right up against your property line. Anyways, I'd like to see the property be cleaned up as well. Maybe you're only going to decide upon, can this be done? But take a look at the whole property. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd love to work with you to clean this thing up and make it a nice property. But I'd like to see the model.
Not yet. Any other comments from the public?
No, I'm really outside.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
Bob lives, Bob is brought to the west side. This is the abutting property owner.
Mr. McKay?
One second. So if we're going to comment, you need to come up to the mic? And if you, you're welcome to come back up, but, or not, but let's, okay.
My client's intention, when he bought this property and had the dumpster delivered, was to go pull the building permit and do the whole project, including cleaning up the lot, getting rid of the pool, taking it out. It got put on hold when the building inspector told him he needed a Section 6 finding, and that's why we're here. The intention is to still clean it up.
Do they need a dumpster permit?
No, you can have a dumpster delivered. The building permit for the remodeling allows the demolition.
So there's a couple issues we need to resolve. First, we need to get the permit, just to make sure that it's appropriate. And then, we need to resolve the Section 6 finding. I am not inclined to go with the Hatfield analogy. I think that if the work is done as counsel has represented, including the cleanup of the property, it would, it would go a long way in saying that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And so I, without having the building permit, I don't think we're going to proceed any further on this. But I don't want to put it off too much longer.
I don't either.
So what, what's our schedule that we could?
So you have a meeting next Tuesday, February, January 17th, but Al is not scheduled to be there. And then the next, and then you did just schedule a meeting for February 1st, where Al, Joe, and hopefully Joe Freeman will be available, but Robin won't be. And then February 15th, I think we only have Robin.
Terrific.
Two associates, so I don't know what works best, you guys, maybe.
So the next, our next scheduled, our hearing next week is on the 17th?
Yeah, Tuesday.
And you are coming?
Mm-hmm.
But you are not?
Not yet.
Can we invite you?
Yes.
And can we, what's the agenda so we can make, can we put this first?
We could put this first, we have World's End and Hull Street and.
So if we put this, okay, so that would make sense. That would mean that before the end, today is Wednesday, can we get by Friday, or tomorrow even, the building permit, so we've got that issue handled?
I'll make it my business.
Yeah, okay. And then, we can continue this the 17th as the first item, if you will indulge it.
Joe, could we also maybe ask for some analysis of the case law on what is considered to be an extension of the, an increase in the nonconforming nature of a structure?
Yes, to the extent that counsel would like to influence the board, he is well advised to make that presentation. So I would accept the motion to continue this to the 17th of January at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Is it seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And I appreciate comments from the neighbors. Next item on the agenda is Evan and Melissa McNamara for a variance from Section 4A of the zoning bylaw and such other relief as necessary to construct an attached 12-foot by 22-foot two-car garage with living space above, resulting in a 21-foot front yard setback, where 25 feet is required at 31 Parkview Drive in Residence District A. Are the McNamara's here? Are you representing the McNamara's?
We're doing McNamara next.
We are.
We skip up to.
We can Kilmer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we skipped. We skipped, we jumped.
That's what, this is what you.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, my bad. On the actual agenda, Kilmer's next.
Try that one. I had that, but then you gave me this.
I'm sorry, it wasn't.
Sorry, my apologies, I did skip. So, then we have 11 Kilmer Road, variance to replace and extend an existing landing and stairs, resulting in a nine-foot front yard setback and 11 and a half-foot side yard setback, where 15 feet is required in Residence District A. My apologies.
I'll try to make it short and sweet, I know you got a bit long.
So if you can identify yourself.
I'm Ron Twombly, I live at 11 Kilmer Road. And I apologize if I do not hear you, I'm a DAV and I'm, my disability is hearing. So anyway, I'm asking for a variance for, it's a setback on my road, it's a very, I don't know if you know this, Kilmer Road is a very small area, all the homes there 50 feet, you know, frontage and the setback, I don't think anybody really lives up to it, because all I'm asking is to run my stairs along the house, not out to the road. And I think I needed 11 feet, and all the homes there are actually, the stairs come down out to the road. I'm asking, I'm keeping it the same way, only the landing I'm extending.
So you're replacing the entryway stairs?
Yes.
And then you're extending the landing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And so I'm not really changing, I'm beautifying the area of the, of the homes being built around there, and it brings it back to a natural way of cottagey, I guess you could say.
Is there any safety reason that you needed to extend the landing?
The stairs were very old anyway, they were falling apart, and so I just beefed up what I had there, and just, and my variance were for the landing, and that's what I'm hoping to.
Yep.
If you look at the, there's a little image of the house in your meeting notes. I think it's just worth noting that the primary living space is significantly elevated over the grade, so it's raised above a basement and undercar garage. So there clearly needs to be some sort of stairway landing in order to access the front door of the property.
But there is a stair there now, right? Am I misreading this photograph?
The improvements have been made.
Right. Oh. Yes, there are stairs now. Yeah. Are we extending this platform over above the garage?
Over the garage, correct. Yes.
Okay. And it's not coming out any further than the existing platform?
Well, actually, it's like a foot.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it is coming up, but not the stairs itself. The stairs are the same, the same, yeah.
And how much further do we know? Oh wait, we're going from nine, from something to nine feet, we just don't know what the something is, right? Let's be fair.
So it's six feet overall, it was probably five feet previously?
So, yeah. Maybe a foot over.
A foot closer, but also closer to that side yard setback.
And it's the deck, it's a platform, it's not enclosed or anything?
It's just going straight over the garage, you know what I mean? It's not coming out to the side, out to the road, that's what I'm, you know, I don't want to change that.
Yep. So the, just so I understand, the increase in the depth of the landing is an additional?
Extended nine feet, right.
It's a foot.
Yes, the footage.
The depth changes, I understand the width, but.
Not the width, the length.
So this increase is a foot? Yeah. By something. Right, 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 exactly.
Well, and then, in addition, the, because it's extended over the garage, it's going to result in an 11.5-foot side yard setback, where 15 feet is required, so that's 3.5 feet into the side yard setback for a depth of six feet.
We can encroach a certain amount with decks anyway, right? Thirty square feet?
Well, so that amounts to 63 square feet, where 30, unless I just did my math wrong, where 30, that doesn't, that does, math doesn't work, hold on. It was three, sorry, 3.5. I should be able to do this one in my head, maybe, I should have eaten dinner. 21, 21 square feet, so that is under the 30 square feet that would be permissible.
So that's a finding?
I don't think you need anything for that, that's an allowed projection into the side yard setback.
Right, going into the 11 and a half foot.
It's all also within the front yard setback.
Right.
Which, which, just so you know, is not actually a front yard setback, because it's not being measured from a street. So I don't, we're not relating this necessarily to a 25-foot front yard setback, because Kilmer has a.
It's a private way, yes.
Private passageway wouldn't comply with our definition of street unless, absent a finding from the planning board, that it, there was one.
Are there any neighbors or abutters here for this?
Yes, we have a neighbor here.
Do you like, do you have any?
He's smiling, he looks like he's in support of this.
That's what I want to hear, one way or the other.
I'm just supportive. Greg's word up, 122 down our road, neighbors. I'd just say it's an improvement to the neighborhood. The encroachment on the next-door neighbor, the 11 feet, is no further than the existing house already is. So I encourage you to approve their variance.
And the intrusion in the going toward Kilmer Road, the additional foot?
The road nobody owns.
You don't have any objection to that?
Not at all.
Okay.
I couldn't tell you that it actually moved out any further, it looks great.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Anyone else here for this?
She's in support.
She better be.
Yes.
Any thoughts?
I have no problem with this, it seems pretty minor.
Right. Go on my side.
I agree. So we need to make the findings, which I think you have given to us, Emily.
This one I was, I got you.
Do you want to go through it?
Okay, sure.
So there are, the first one, there are circumstances relating to the soil shape or topography, especially affecting the land, but not affecting generally the zoning district. And the lot is narrow in shape, with 50 feet of frontage on Kilmer, which is an 11-foot wide private passageway. And the main living area is raised above the basement, the at-grade basement, as Emily said, and garage. And this is not a condition that is generally found in the zoning district. Second, the literal enforcement of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. The applicant has already represented that the stairs were falling apart and needed to be replaced, and that there were safety concerns. And obviously, they need to make the improvements to access their home. And the improvements will be consistent with other single-family uses in Residence A zoning district. Third, a variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Obviously, it's going to improve the structure, both from a safety and appearance standpoint, and there are no adverse impacts on the neighborhood, it seems pretty de minimis. And the neighbor was in support of it. And finally, the variance can be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. It's a modest extension associated with a pre-existing nonconforming structure, and the resulting structure is consistent with the character of the neighborhood.
I agree. Are there any conditions we need to associate with the variance? Do we have sufficient plans here that we can say it needs to be done in accordance with the plans?
It's already been done.
It's already been done, then we do have the plan.
Yes, you could try and find, look at it. So typically, in these cases, they're required to, after the fact, apply for a building permit.
I was about to say, is there a permit?
And that's been initiated, yeah.
Okay. So a condition would be that the work be permitted in accordance with applicable law, so that it is built and complies with the building code. So I would accept a motion to grant the variance as requested, subject to the condition that, in fact, the work be done pursuant to a building permit duly issued by the building administrator. Not the building administrator, the.
Building commissioner.
Building commissioner, that's, okay, it's getting late.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so which item am I looking at here now? Next item on the agenda, Alexis and Jeremy Sartori, 974 Main Street. This is an application for a variance to connect an existing dwelling to a nonconforming garage, add living storage space above, and construct in addition to the rear of the garage, which is located eight and a half feet from the side yard setback, where 20 feet is required in Residence District B.
Good evening, Jeff Caccio here for the Sartoris, 974 Main Street. We're looking at Residence B, and, good night, Susan. And we basically have a lot which is 49,600 so square feet, so it sounds like really, you know, large, it certainly exceeds the 30,000 square foot minimum for Residence B. But it's a situation where, where the house is, the house is built in 1912, it's a beautiful shingle style, the land just drops right off, so it drops by 18 feet over the course of about 60 linear feet. So it's a beautiful house, when you go by on Main Street, it's there, and the garage is there. But the minute that you go into the backyard, you notice that it's got a series of decks and terraces that just fall into this huge bowl, which is there. So what's happened is that the Sartoris are forced to work with what they have. The garage was rebuilt in 1991 pursuant to all historic approvals, to convert it from something, you know, very pedestrian and dilapidated to being matching in structure with the eaves and the rakes of the existing house, et cetera. So it's a really nice shell of the barn. What happens in their scenario is, it's a nice older home, the reality is that it's only 2,300 feet in size, and it's extremely limited just because of the age of the house. For example, if you go in, the laundry's in the basement, and I've attached some photographs, and unfortunately, what happens is, you know, the cameras don't show depth, and that also shows when I try to get the, try to show you the extent of the bowl out back. But if you look at the cellar stairs, the. But if you look at the cellar stairs, the cellar stairs are, you know, extremely narrow, but, and it doesn't show, but the steepness of them, it's a situation where you're going down, and for me, I'm not the tallest guy in the world, and when you get down in two spots, you're, you're ducking to basically get through. So the house, that, you know, that's probably the biggest thing that I would say when you get in there and you actually try to circumnavigate in the house. What they're looking to do is to have a situation where, one, they've got the existing garage, they'd like to convert the second floor to some heated living space, so that's, you know, basically a vertical extension of that existing garage. And then also, what they'd like to do is to be able to construct a connecting addition, just one story, from the back of the existing house to the back of the garage. That existing grade there, as I mentioned, is currently taken up by retaining walls, decks, and things of that nature. And John Teriyaki is the architect on this, so in meeting him out there, a lot of what he accomplished was being able to subsume, subsume that grade within the retaining, excuse me, the foundation for the, for the addition. What happens is, we've got an irregularly shaped lot. Again, it's got a lot of size, but it all, the entire, you know, let's say three-quarter back of the lot is that bowl, but it's only got 100 feet of frontage over on Main Street. So again, they don't have a whole lot to work with, side to side. The side setback for the south side is 20 feet, and currently, where the garage is situated, you know, pre-existing non-conforming, it's 8.8 feet away at its exist, at its closest point. This project will get no closer than, than what is there for the existing garage. It's a situation, of course, we need a variance because we don't have, you know, it's not, it's not currently living space, so we don't, you know, otherwise, if it was, we'd have a Hatfield situation. Looking through, just give me one second, I'm just going to take a look at my notes. What they're going to use it for on the one-story addition is, basically, it's going to provide a mudroom that allows for some storage and a closet. Also, they're going to have laundry facilities there, and then also a half bath. By putting the half bath there, they're able to take a half bath, which is kind of crammed in where they currently eat. So it's a situation where you've got a half bath, you know, next to an eating table. It's not, you know, it's not the greatest situation, so what they're going to do is they're just going to convert that into a, into a pantry and basically move that half bath over into this little addition piece. Beyond that, the numbers, I've run it through, I believe there's only 120 feet of intrusion to the 20-foot setback, new intrusion, which will be for the footprint of that addition. And again, the addition's only that one story, so it's a situation where it respects, you know, obviously, the, the lines of that garage were important back in 1991. It respects all of that, doesn't do anything to diminish it, and John's basically worked with, you know, within what he's given. The final, the final product will still have some decking integrated into it, et cetera, but it'll be a situation where they're using the only real available space. Again, it's not entirely flat, but it's the spot that you can use to add any living space, and it also has the added advantage of taking the curse out of that huge bowl. With respect to your criteria. I think the, the lot shape-
Jeff, let me just interrupt.
Yes, sir.
So I understand, currently, there's no living space in the setback. Am I right?
That's absolutely correct. Otherwise, right.
Right, and so you're, what you're proposing is the introduction of, of living space?
Living space on the second floor and then also in the, basically the addition, which will be the laundry. Right, otherwise, if there was some living space in the garage, it would just be, you know, it would be a Hatfield situation. So by linking it, excuse me, he goes no closer, but it is now going to be an introduction of the living space, both on that first floor piece, and then also, when you go into the second floor of the existing garage, that's, that'll also be introduced as a living space. I didn't mention the septic, but that also complicates. I gave you a photograph.
So you can't go back because of, okay.
Well, you can't go back further than, so this is basically appended to the back of the garage, but so far as they're able to tastefully or effectively catch the grade change, what I've done is, you can see, I did give you a topo.
Yeah. Do you think you could possibly make that any smaller, because it'd be really helpful? That's funny. Right, I saw that, this is exactly what I'm, be helpful.
I do have a magnifying glass now, and I was laughing so I throw out, now people come by and borrow it.
You bring it here next to you?
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. I have a limited influence on these people. But you can see, what they do is he basically eats up what grade he can, and you can also see the septic system. The septic, you know, it's, it's a couple of gradient lines down, so the septic is where it starts to get down, and from there, it just, after that, it just bowls down. So the septic system, the reaching, the looking at, must just be so deep, because otherwise you're going to look at a breakup, the, you know, the slope is so extreme there. And then if you look at the exhibit, which I think is B on the first floor plan, A1.1, basically, it's just, it's this piece that connects to the level, and then you can see that the closet is capped out with laundry facilities. So that is the introduction, and again, that, that winds up to 120 square feet into that side, the sideline.
So in other words, this area here is 120?
Yeah.
Here?
Yes, so the dotted, yes, the dotted line over. That winds up to 120.
Okay. So this area is 120, so that's the intrusion. Am I right? Fantastic.
If you look at the rendering, you can see with the rendering, which is actually helpful, you can see the wall, just because of the exposed, what's going to do is he's-
Yeah, basically, this is the before and after.
Yeah, I think so, exactly.
Right.
And B, the neighbor to the south, et cetera, so-
So this neighbor here is, that can, is-
Right, he'd be the closest, you know, the garage is already there, this addition is behind the existing garage, so it's further away.
How far back does this structure go? Is it-
It's not very, um, excuse me.
You get a hint of it in the site plan, in this tiny site plan.
Yeah, what you see is what you get.
Okay.
So it's not further back than this. So what happens is additionally, it's because of the grade, you start to lose it. They're, they're actually kind of veneer, you know, thing here, whatever is there as far as exposed foundation, so they're composite that and using that foundation also as a retaining wall. You know, it's done something that they're going to stone face, so that's not just going to be a raw side of, you know, concrete facing that way. And of course, everyone was noticed and, no, in all that.
Architecturally, makes perfect sense, but zoning-wise, you can see where that goes.
Oh, and on the north side of the house, it's just, there's not enough room over and, and, you know, what you're looking at over there, it, it basically allows for the matching of the two structures, so it's more efficient use of the footprint. And I, I just want to reiterate, we got there, the yard is, like, it's real, when you go there, you just, it's kind of a laugher. Great sledding place, ha, ha, ha. Yeah, like, hey, well, great sledding place, ha, 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 answer, yes, my children have almost killed themselves there. Yeah, funky.
The, what is currently the garage, will it continue to be used as a garage?
Yes, so the first floor-
I'm sure it's in the other drawing, okay.
Yes, continued, two-car garage, it was, again, rebuilt in 91, so it's got a nice, it's sound, it's got nice bones, and again, a lot of money went into matching it with the 1912 structure. That's a, yeah, it's nice. And that's the other thing that John didn't want to do. He didn't want to, he didn't want to do funky things that, you know, goofed around with, which was obviously an important, you know, face to the street.
Right now, what is coming out of the garage? Is that a, that, it looks, it looks like a fence that's coming out, like from the, see what I'm saying?
What is that? It's a, kind of a-
I do remember sliding there, but I don't remember what it was, and I, I didn't take this picture, Scott did, but whether or not, nothing impressed me back there.
It looks as if there's a, you know-
Yeah, like a fence.
Like a fence.
Like a barn, like a-
And...
It's tough to see.
Well, that's interesting. Oh, look at this, there's even a better photograph, the bottom of, this one.
Oh, the rendered?
Yeah, where that. It's like a post and rail, oh, wow. So it looks like a post and rail, and they pick up some of the, you can see the bushes, they're picking up some of the grade.
Right, I got it.
So the existing garage is, let's say, something close to 250 square feet into the setback? Is that a reasonable number to just assign? And we're increasing that non-conformity by another 120 square feet?
Yes.
So about a third more than what's, is presently non-conforming?
Yeah. Although the other one, obviously, is two, you know, two stories.
Right.
This is only one.
Yeah, what, but the height, I mean, it doesn't look like much of a height difference because you've, it's one story with a, you know, what's above here, was that also living space above the first story?
No.
So what's, what's, what's behind the window?
No, what's happening on this is the photograph, he kept the perspective from down the slope. So what happened, this is only one-
What, so what's behind this window?
Um, not, la, 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 la.
It looks like it's-
It's, um, it's, I think it's just decorative. Yeah, there it is, you're, you're exactly right, Jeff. There's the window and the stair. As you go down, you'll get some daylight in there.
But what happens is, that's deceiving because-
Well, that's the, no, you're, because that's, that window isn't there. That's, this window you're talking about is actually here.
Yeah, where is it?
It would be here, which is, maybe just, it's probably decorative, because I'm attic space. I don't think the first one would be vaulted. Not that really. It could be just above the toilet.
No, I'm talking about, it could be new construction.
Oh, that window, yeah, yeah.
So basically, this, this is-
Oh, wait, oh, there's two different things going on. So this rendering is, is, one of these is right, one's the right. I think this is more correct, that rendering is probably.
So is this not right?
No. So what happens?
This is, there's no window.
Oh, that's substantially different. So which, so which one is that?
See the photograph there, the used, that's from down the slope, so it's looking like that's as tall as that.
Well, that's still there, but what Joe was picking up on is that this window, these are the two different designs, and which one is the more-
Which one is the correct one?
Correct one.
And where do we-
It would suggest that it would be this one.
So which one is that in our packet?
Yeah, this is the actual plan, 2.8, as opposed to rendering.
So this, oh, this is in the new packet that came today, Joe, yeah.
Oh, my God, there's new packets?
You got it. Filed Elon's, last week.
After packets, right.
Oh, because I'm looking at the December 12 packet.
Right, so this is December 27.
Thank you. Thank you. So this is the right one.
Yes.
I can disregard this.
Yes. I had this rendering.
Yep.
Okay, that's, that's a big difference.
Makes you feel, but yeah.
Yeah, that's a big, you can't-
It is?
Yeah. Talk about this one story, and I'm looking at this and say it's-
Well, the thing is, is that's take, that's, that's straight on. If you, if you actually-
I understand what you're saying. This is looking, right.
You'd be levitating several, like 10 feet off the ground, to be able to look at it that way.
Can you do that?
Yeah.
Joe can.
I wouldn't be surprised.
Absolutely. Oh, that's what's down here.
This is what's there on the-
Yeah. Except for this, these, this dormer, these are new.
Yep.
Proposed.
Is, how, is this protruding-
That's proud of that.
Out of here? No, from here?
Yeah, oh, from there?
This is not flush?
No, see, that's, that steps back, looks to be like six feet.
Okay. Yep.
It's not flush. So, but this is flush with the main house.
Right, 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 okay. Uh, whoa, 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 this is flush with the main house.
Yeah.
So this is not flush with-
It's flush with this.
That's not what this drawing shows.
No, it does. It doesn't not show that.
It does not show that. Would you have guessed that this is the same depth as this? That this is parallel to this?
Well, that's what the other drawings seem to suggest, but it doesn't look that way.
Because of the grade, I think it's the grading that's throwing you off. But I don't know.
Totally, I don't have the spatial relation talent that- I will not be able to.
It seems so fun, doesn't it?
It does seem fun, is it fun?
Oh, it's a blast. Never a dull moment.
So I see, this is what's down here.
Basically, flush with the back, yes.
Yep.
So A1.2 shows-
Oh, here we go.
Yeah, it does kind of look like that's not as far out as this.
And the second floor is a playroom, is it, what do I see?
Yeah, it's just, um, just on-
Stories, living, yep.
Yeah, so, yeah, you know, basically, they've got young kids, and that'll be where you, where housed your kids when they were, when they were dinging walls and all that, yeah. So basically, the basement in this place is just this little historic little hole. And I've listed the criteria, you know, et cetera, that I went through in my presentation. And then the other thing is, is that it'll be 8.8 feet, that's where the garage is, but basically, I think it goes back to like 11 feet, because it's not exactly parallel to the property line, so, you know, so the numbers-
So the, the closer we are to the road, the closer we are to the setback, and then it's going inward?
Yes, yes. So what this will do is this actually, you know, kind of, because it's going to be parallel-
It's not parallel to the setback.
Correct, but it's parallel to the current garage.
Right.
So what it does is it just, it just completely, it just, it continues to increase the distance. And then you can see John Kavanaugh has got some numbers.
Or to put it differently, the intrusion decreases as it-
There you go, that's nicely said.
Which is what you want to tell us, right? Okay.
It is, but I'm uttering, maybe at around 8 o'clock, I could have formulated that sentence.
No. Which of these, no, I'm not going to figure it out. Okay, so I, um, I think, I agree with Al, it architecturally makes sense, and we just need to address if this is something that is allowed, you know, is, that calls for variance, because there are lots of things that you want to do that setbacks don't let you do.
Yep.
Did you walk us through the variance criteria?
Sure.
Or did I?
Well, I, I went through kind of a summary, so, you know, basically, on the soil condition, shape, et cetera, I talked about, it's a narrow lot, we can't do anything to the north, and one of the photographs even shows that, there's no room. The bowl shape, again, the drop-down of 18 feet, right where the house starts, it's significant, it really doesn't give any opportunities to put an addition anywhere else on the lot and have it function as a, you know, some way relationship to the house, other than, you know, truly dropping down multiple stories on the back, it would just, it would not be a good thing. So what John's done is he's, he's basically used what land is there and not got, not gone closer to the existing septic system, but he's taken up enough of the grade so that he's able to have a nice, you know, retention to be able to get this addition at the grade without, you know, without having to start chasing it down the hill. I think he's done an excellent job with what he's got, and I think he was successful in concentrating everything to the rear of the garage, again, you know, trying to maximize-
Am I correct that there's two changes going on?
Yes.
One is, the garage itself is being converted to living space.
The second floor, yes. The second floor, yes.
The second floor.
And then also, there's going to be this addition that connects the house to the garage.
So you've got the, you have the garage, you're having work done there, you're also building behind the garage?
Yes.
And you've got the connection?
Right.
None of, the connection doesn't intrude into, is...
No.
Right, so that's, that's not an issue. So in the setback, we have the living space above the garage?
Yes.
That's, needs a variance?
Yep.
And then the further construction behind the garage needs the variance?
Correct, or corners of those.
And if you were to do the construction behind the garage without converting the garage itself into living space...
Still need a variance?
You still, you need that variance, and you're not, there's, there's no, that doesn't help from a setback standpoint, it just helps from use of the...
Can I clarify just one, or ask for clarification on one thing, because it's not, it's not clear to me? The second floor of the garage exists, it's just being converted to living space.
Absolutely. I mean, it's, it's funny...
I think in the past, you maybe have looked at that as a find, as a finding? No.
No.
Did we do that on Otis Street?
We did it on Downey, when we did that on Downing?
Yeah.
We put a connector in, it was, it was basically the same thing. And it was a re, total rebuild of an existing garage to be...
So that's a variance, because it's being reconstructed?
I know the variance, right.
But is this being reconstructed?
Yeah, well, they're adding dormers, though.
The space is there.
Right, dorm, right.
But, but in terms of magnitude, it's, it's a dimensional issue, it's not really a use issue, it is, the use is changing, but the...
So if there was no construction behind the garage, and they just wanted to convert the garage to living space?
We allow living space in garages, in accessory structures, so you can...
But they're also expanding the living space of the second floor of the garage. I mean, that's part of this proposal.
Well, in terms of the dormers?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but, but in terms of magnitude, it's relatively modest, that change. It's not the whole second floor.
It could, in the future, maybe go a different path. I mean, what's funny is if, they could add the dormers anytime, right, to the existing place, right?
Yeah, right, yeah.
They could put a, they could put a drywall down the middle of the second floor and say, or you'll put a sheet, and say, "Don't live over there, live over here," and then they could notch out the back of, that's what, you know, so...
I know.
They can have space up there that they can use, that, it's really just the dormers that are the change on the second floor, and then there's the expansion on the back. But just if you're trying to assess what actually needs relief, I don't think it's the fact that they're using the second floor.
So, so if, if they can, are you saying that they could convert the garage to living space?
Well, for instance, there was an application on Otis Street where there was a detached accessory structure, they were attaching, you know, it to a, a single-family home, and that was permitted through, and by default, because it's becoming attached, it was, the nonconformities associated with the garage would extend to the single family, and the board did that all through a finding. But, but if we, so is that what, how you're thinking about this one?
So if you convert it, if you're saying they could convert the garage, just say the whole garage to living space?
They could convert it to, to not garage space. It could be a home occupation, it could be...
Right, on Beach Road, we did way back...
Right, so then why wouldn't Hatfield then kick in to say they could build...
Because it's not a single family, right? So this is a detached garage. So you can have living space in detached garages, as long as in combination, it's not...
Right, this is detached, I'm sorry.
It's detached.
On a separate, on a separate dwelling unit.
Okay. You're right, it's, I missed it, it's detached.
Well, because it's becoming attached, it looks like. Becoming attached, so there's, it's, it's really a, it's a new nonconformity that's sort of a, going to be now related to this new single family that includes an attached garage, where previously there was a detached garage. But, but in terms of the dimensional relief that's requested, it's, it's maybe more...
It's really just the construction.
It's the back.
It's the back.
It's the back, and, you know, and these tiny dormers, yeah.
Okay, so, I didn't mean to distract you, so you're walking us through...
No, it's good, because, which, you know, what we do is, we try to look ahead, and then going into the building permit, and then we work through all these different questions.
So you've, you've gone over the soil conditions?
Yep, so I've gone over the soil conditions next, basically, with respect to...
Substantial hardship.
Substantial hardship. You basically get a situation where the functional laundry storage space, you know, down in the basement, it's just, it's not, it's just not functional for, you know, for safe use. You wouldn't be able to build stairs of those dimensions today, just because, you know, they're steep, they don't comply, and it's just, it's kind of a hazard to get down there. So therefore, you know, trying to get up and down with laundry baskets, it's a problem in the family, you know, goes down there very, basically very seldomly.
Laundry baskets are not the type of hardship that qualify on this.
Well, to be, to be able to live, so what they're doing is, they're in a situation where it would be tremendously expensive, for example, if they were to try to put something off the back that was within the setbacks, we talked about all those grades, to rip off all of those decks, and to try to add on the back, to be able to achieve some usable space, is just the cost and, you know, the detriment to that would just be significant. I think what they've done is, John's done a really good job at working with what they have and coming up with a, you know, with a plan that makes some sense.
I do consider laundry to be a substantial hardship, so...
Yeah, a lot of people do, I just, that's...
I don't know where you're coming from.
That's pretty, Joe, someone, someone doesn't do laundry.
Right, right. He, someone doesn't...
Someone doesn't do...
What's happening here is...
And this is going to be publicly aired, I'm going to be in real trouble.
You still get your NEAs resolutions, it's still January. Variance may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, you know, basically, to be able to transition from the garage to the house, not having to go through, you know, all those outdoor areas with respect to have, you know, not that children affect the variance, but the bottom line is that the garage is used by a family. To be able to have it so that there's a mudroom and have some connection between the garaging area and the back of the house, it's, it's safety, keeps people out of the elements, et cetera. And it's something that's consistent with other uses in the district, it's a residential district, and that is a residential, residential use that's commonly recognized. And then also, variance may be granted without nullifying or substantially interrogating from the intent or purposes of the bylaw. Again, what they're doing is renovation alteration of a pre-existing nonconforming garage to allow for the functional use for this family of having laundry facilities that half-bath the mudroom, et cetera, consistent with uses in the residential zone. You folks have, you know, obviously, in the past, looked at such uses that are not inconsistent with residential uses, which the underlying zoning is attached to, and, or basically, it doesn't do anything that goes against the character of the neighborhood. You've got, you know, nice, single-family houses with a connection or a mix of detached, attached garages, et cetera, and this just continues to use that pre-existing nonconforming garage in a way that allows for it to provide better function for, for this existing house, et cetera, et cetera, and it's, you know, relatively consistent with other types of relief that you folks have, have granted, asking and seeking that the people, you know, they're not just blatantly going in an area because, for aesthetic purposes, or just because they want to do it. I think that we've demonstrated that, you know, John's really, by just doing the one story on the back, by having everything tucked in, having it in the back, and then using up that grade, I think he shows that he's been very, very efficient and shown the maximum respect for the setbacks, and not really taking any liberties with respect to design or expanding the footprint beyond what we think is reasonable, and we hope you folks agree.
Thank you.
Thoughts? No, I mean, it's a thoughtful addition, it seems, you know, it works, as Jeff said, it doesn't exacerbate any of the existing nonconformities, it sort of works within the framework of those areas, and it really significantly sort of improves the entire home, not that that really matters, but sort of, I just see it as, you know, a reasonable request.
I tend to agree. I don't think it's, I, I don't have a problem with it, I think he's demonstrated there's topography issues, I think it does qualify for a variance, it seems thoughtful, it's, everything's happening on the back of the house, so it's not really impacting the neighborhood or anybody nearby. I'm okay with this.
You guys are really, would we really? So what conditions would we attach? I think we would need to make sure that there'd be, there, there could be no additional extensions of the, of the house or the structure into, into the setback or along the setback.
You have another date?
Oh my God, I'm very sorry.
She's doing laundry.
Okay.
That you dare.
She's doing, um, like about hardship.
I'm telling you.
Any other conditions that we would need to...
Otherwise consistent with the plans and representations made by the applicant.
So there would not be, there's no implied license to do anything further, extending further back along the same plane, whether or not it's going into the setback?
That's fine, but it's...
It's not because you need a variance.
Right, but it's almost, yeah, right, but, well, it's almost, no, you're almost saying that it doesn't spawn a Hatfield.
That's exactly where I'm, that's...
Oh, wow, yeah.
That, that, right, because it's, I mean, we are...
Which we've done before, and I always understood, you're getting a variance, so...
Right, I, I don't want there to be, you know, the push to have a Hatfield-esque advance, where the effect of this variance would be to introduce living space into the setback where there is no living space now.
Yeah, right, where otherwise, what would need your incentive?
Right, right, exactly. So with that condition, those conditions, one being done consistent with the plans and representations, and second, no further intrusions or continuation along the line. Without permission of the, right. And this is not an implied, had, to the extent that this could be somehow pulled into a Hatfield arrangement, this variance would say it cannot go along a Hatfield arrangement. Am I being clear?
You are.
Okay.
Yes, it's making it clear for everyone else, but, but that, yeah, Hatfield would not apply to this construction.
Because someone would have to seek further relief, so within 30 years, we're all long gone. Someone doesn't say, "Oh, look back in 2017," they said absolutely no further.
Right, right, right. Okay, so with that, I'd accept the motion to grant the variance as requested.
I move so move.
There are second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
How did you know? Let's see, next item on our agenda. I'm looking at the wrong agenda again. Next item on the agenda is Evan and Melissa McNamara, 31 Parkview Drive, a variance to construct and attach 12-foot by 22-foot two-car garage with living space above, resulting in a 21-foot front yard setback where 25 feet is required in Residence District A.
Jeff Toccio and...
Really?
Yes, Mr. McNamara is here. He's been here.
You kept him waiting all night, Jeff?
Yep, I did.
I know.
No, he's, you're okay to be here, right? Parkview Drive, you folks are all familiar, off of Thaxus Street, very interesting subdivision, about 1940, and lo and behold, 1950s, I believe, here come these nice, you know, a combination of ranches, splits, very interesting, very undersized lots, and very, very interesting topography. The intervening street between Harbor View and Park View is like summit, so that should tell us, you know, what we're looking at with some of the topography up there. This lot is only nine, 9,777 square feet, it's comprised of two lots that are side by side. When you add them all up, you put them together, it's basically in a situation where, give me one second, it's got 123 feet of frontage, so it's slightly nonconforming with respect to the front, although that doesn't really, you know, the house has, you know, it's situated well on the lot. The problem is that the lot is only about 82 feet deep. So the existing house, when you look at it, it's, it's conforming within the area allowed in the lot, obviously, it's Residence A, but what happens is, when you're at the street and you look up at the house, you're looking at a, over 27 feet, you're looking at a five-foot climb from the toe of the driveway up to a garage. The garage is situated one half-floor below the main living floor space, so it's got an interesting little orientation there, and you basically have to climb up this short, stubby driveway to get to a single-car garage. The single-car garage is appended to the front of the house, and it's basically nonusable for several reasons. For example, the door is only eight feet in width and 610 in height, and then, for some reason, and you can see the photograph, when you go inside, the inside wall of the garage has this big drywall block that protrudes into, into the garage. The combination of that super steep drive, and then when you get up there and you try to get into this thing, just makes it functionally not usable. What they seek to do is to demolish that, rip that off the front, and chop down the grade to make it basically level with the threshold elevation of the street. So basically, through the use of some retaining walls, drop that down so that they don't have that steep pitch driveway, and have it so that you can just go right on in to two cars, and then what will happen is, above that, they can have a slight addition to, to where basically like their kitchen area is now, and what that'll do is, that'll be held at the first-floor elevation that currently exists. What you'll do is, if you look at, just give me one second to grab my plans, what's happening is, if we look at the plans that Jonathan created together, you can basically see, concentrate on... If you look at, for example, A-2 proposed basement floor plan, this shows the configuration after the driveway would be flat down, you can see the use of the retaining walls. On this side of the street, so basically, the north side of the street, if you look around, you can see at various times that neighbors have concocted different ways to bite into the front yards of these properties, to be able to put up retaining walls, pads, there are various types of topographical solutions that are all on this side of the road.
I just realized, this is not too far from your Beale Street project.
Yeah, right, exactly, so, no...
That's the crow fly, it's right there.
Is it? No, this is closer to Baker Hill than, yeah, I guess that's right.
Beale Street is right there, okay.
Yeah, Wartler's now, so, it's a situation where, right now, I did take some photos... So it's a situation where, right now, I did take some photos just even during the storm the other day, just because I was in the neighborhood, I drove by, and there were the cars, you know, with the snow, et cetera. What they often do is, in the winter, they don't even use the driveway, they wind up going out on the street. Mr. McNamara was snowblowing the other day, and he just, you know, it gets to a point where it would be funny if it wasn't kind of crazy trying to navigate that. By, by lowering that grade, taking that curse up, using the retaining walls, what it does is it allows for being able to safely pull the cars off the street and be able to park them. Also have a garage which is more than, just kind of a glorified, you know, storage shed appended to the front of the house, which is pretty unattractive in its current state. If you look at proposed site layout plan, PS1, you can basically see that you're looking at, you know, just only, I think it's four feet, they have to go forward in order to be able to get it to the depths that they can get modern vehicles into, and it still retains a setback of 21 feet from, from the, you know, basically from the front lot line, obviously, front lot, not obviously, the edge of pavement is even further down. So what it does is, it's going to be de minimis in looking at it, but it's going to be a big improvement as far as being able to make an actual safe and usable garage, again, similar to what some of the other solutions have been in the, the prop, in the neighborhood. We're looking at...
Could you comment on that? What, how are the other neighborhood's homes?
Other...
How consistent is this with, with the neighborhood?
It's, it's not exact, but it's consistent, so for example, in the neighborhood, you've got some other folks who, you can tell, have chopped down areas to be able to put in a flat parking area and then added on garages. I can't say whether they needed variances or not, just because we didn't do that level of research, but you are, you're driving around and you're looking at a series of mid-century homes, and you guys look at houses like I do, you, you would actually laugh and say, "Look at those retaining walls, look how those people put in that parking pad, look how this, that, the other thing." Some people, that's what their solution is, they actually, you know, get retaining walls and just take a big bite out of their front yards, and then they don't even need any zoning relief for it, it's, you know, it's kind of this cheap way to do it, but it's not, it's not a good solution, it's an investment in the neighborhood, it's not, it's not safe, it doesn't allow really for the garaging of the vehicles. But this does, by just taking that, that four feet into the front and then dropping everything down, it's going to be a huge improvement, because what you're actually going to do is, when you come to this property, whether you're, you know, visitor or whatnot, you're going to know where to go, it's going to be safe, you're going to be able to get out of the car. They do, and I can tell you, you know, from being over, young kids, holidays, grandparents coming, it is, it's downright treacherous.
This really improves the approach to the...
Yep, so this is the intrusion, right here. How much of that is, is necessary, or is...
Well, it's 23 foot six, and it's standard garage.
24.
24, so it's, it's obviously six inches less than that, so it's...
Okay, so you really can't trim it, okay.
We, no, I think it's where it needs to be.
And then it's only 22.6 for the width, right?
Yeah.
24 is usual, you know, again, they're not looking, and by the way, it doesn't have any intrusion within the site setback. Again, a situation where people are working with what they have, I think, I don't think we really touch anything unless the people have kind of trimmed it, and I know that I can come in and, you know, say, "People aren't being crazy."
And I look at the, the way it's drawn, I'm thinking, "Wow, they could just cut it there, it'd be fine," but that's...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, these are, these are minis. Okay. Do you have any issues?
It's not a suburban.
Do you have any issues with this?
No.
Okay, so can you just walk us through the criteria?
Yeah, absolutely. So with respect to, one second, circumstances relating to lot shape, et cetera, we've got a situation, I think the predominant issues are the lot size, the existing house, which basically kind of elbows its way, and up against all the setbacks, we've got a significantly undersized lot, which is, you know, less than half of the required size within the Residence A zone, but the, the 800-pound gorilla is the, you know, the extreme slope in the front of the driveway. By introducing the garage where it is, shaving that down, although keeping a positive drainage away from the garage so that it doesn't get water back in, and the use of those retaining walls, it's going to allow them to solve and use that, the garage that comes out in the foundation of the garage, to be able to put in the retaining walls and come up with a solution to that topographical issue that they have. With respect to the substantial hardship, et cetera, they currently have a garage which is on the front of this structure, and, you know, for all intents and purposes, it's, it's useless, and in conjunction with the existing slope, that goes right up to its threshold, you know, they're in effect maintaining a, you know, a portion of the structure that just, you know, supports a very dangerous topographical change. The hardship, you know, has to do with the fact that, you know, they're just, whether it's paying taxes, maintaining, eating, et cetera, this very, you know, rather decent-sized box which is appended to the front of their house, and it does nothing but really kind of get in the way of, you know, people coming, traveling safely, et cetera, and we think that that, that would have a hardship. There's no other area here that you could add a garage without, you know, significantly going into a, you know, another area of a setback. This is the, you know, minimal area, or the minimal way of, of achieving that garage on the safe, the safe driveway, without, you know, taking liberties with respect to your zoning setbacks. Granted, variance may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, again, providing proper dimensions for safe parking, modern-sized vehicles, taking that, taking out that steep driveway is all to the public good, particularly safety, and also allowing for cars to be parked safely off the street. This is a, you know, not the widest street, and if people get into the habit, as they do, of just parking the cars outside so that they don't have to try to park on the driveway, it just winds up with a congested and clogged situation. And then finally, the variance may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating. From the intent or purpose of the bylaw, basically allowing for the reconstruction of both, you know, this, this existing undersized structure, and then also curing the issues with respect to the steep driveway, will allow the functional use of those structures, safe functional use of structures. The residential context is common in the neighborhood, is consistent with the bylaw, and, you know, typically, you folks will, you know, consider that when you look at the deviation that's asked for. In this instance, only a four-foot intrusion into the front setback.
What's the square footage intrusion?
Square footage is, I believe it's 90.
It's, pretty de minimis.
Yep.
Is there anyone, there is no one here to, have we gotten any comments submitted?
No.
You haven't gotten one?
No.
So I would accept the motion to grant the variance as requested, with the condition that it be built in accordance with the plans that submitted, the board.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much, thanks for everything, thank you for the alliance, excellent questions, even talking to people outside, you know, people, people liked having the presentations. Thank you very much, we'll see you guys soon, bye.
I just have to quickly continue to things to tomorrow night.
Okay.
But Al, you don't need to vote on these.
I don't?
Nope.
69 Water?
It has to be continued.
Right, okay, so next item on agenda is Lisa Parsons, 69 Water Street, which is a special permit A2 modification. We have received a request to continue this to January 12, January 12 at 7:00 PM. I'll cut the motion to so continue.
So moved.
And I will second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, continue, next item, Brendan Kiernan at 21 Forest Lane, this is a variance application, and again, we have a request to continue this to January 12 at 7:00 PM. Is there such a motion?
Yep, there sure is.
I second it, all in favor?
Aye.
I appreciate that, because those are both because of me.
I will, I will accept a motion to adjourn, because...
I will move to adjourn.
We're not going to do any other, anything else.
That's all you have to do.
And I second that, you can second that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I've got laundry.
We are adjourned.